All right, looks like we're live. Good evening, everyone. I'll call the October 16th Gray Main Planning Board Meeting to order at 7:05. So first up on the agenda is roll call. Melinda.
Present.
Tamara.
Present.
And I am also present. So we are 100% here, three of us. Okay. So we've got a lot on the agenda tonight, so I'm going to be doing my best to keep things moving along. So I appreciate we'll all try and be to the point, and same thing with the applicants, and focus on what's new and what's changed, and let's not revisit a lot of the older stuff because I think we're going to be challenged to get through it all, potentially. So first up then is minutes approval. We've got minutes for July 13th. Any comments on July 13th?
So.
Oh, sounded like a comment.
Yeah, so I just noted that you had commented in regards to the...
Was it me or Melinda?
It was actually you, Dan.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, thank you.
Yeah.
That the approval was granted only due to the lengths that were undertaken by Avesta for the development, and we wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't have approved this if it was a first go around. And I know that you stated that to get it on the record, and I appreciate it that you made that comment, so I just did note it in the minutes.
Okay, so is there a revision that you'd like to say?
Yeah.
That was so long ago, I don't remember saying it, so thank you.
I had written it in last month. It was just in regards to the Avesta approval.
This is September 14th?
This was July 13th.
July 13th. July 13th, page...
Well, that's where it doesn't fit. It was kind of, it was made right...
Just above the motion.
Yeah.
Can you leave me that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, so is that it?
That is it.
Okay. So a motion to approve the July 13th minutes.
As amended.
As amended, thank you.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? It's three-nothing. All right, September 14th. Any comments or corrections on that one?
No.
No.
Motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second?
Yes.
All in favor? It's three-nothing again. Information exchange. We've got, I think, a couple things here in our memo.
Yeah, so some updates on the ordinance front. There was a workshop with the town council on September 25 and first reading of the changes related to LD 2003, which is now a chaptered law of the state regarding housing density. And they heard that first reading at the October 3 regular meeting of the council. This is, tonight is the statutory public hearing regarding those changes, and it's anticipated that it will go to second read tomorrow night at council. And I don't know if there was anyone at public hearing at council regard could speak to that. And the only, yeah, that was the only update really, other than if there are council updates.
Okay. And listed in the memo but not on the agenda, sounded like, Dan, you had some council updates you wanted to share?
Just a couple of quick ones. Obviously, we reappointed Melinda to the planning board.
Thank you.
And have put in place some changes across all the council committees, actually, to track people's terms and standardize that process a little bit more, if you will, so that we can keep that from happening in the future because it's just inefficient and makes more work for everybody when that happens. The only thing that's new is the council has started a discussion, I don't know if it's, how far it's going to go, if it'll have enough support on the council to continue to talk about residential construction in the commercial zone and the business transition districts, and with the same sort of eye towards a similar discussion that we had around self-storage units in the commercial zones, trying to design an ordinance that's going to help us give people an opportunity to use their land the way they want to, but help us develop the kind of building stock and inventory we need if we're going to get the diverse tax base that we've been trying to get for decades. So I don't know how far that will go, but if it makes it out of, if it is something that lands on the council's priority, we'll hear more about that in the future.
Okay, thanks. The information from the board. None here as well, okay. Next up then is public hearings. I'm sorry. First public hearing is on proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, Chapter 402, to add a new section, 402.8.11 Self-Storage Facility Standards and to amend the Village Center VC Proper Design Standards. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this change? Okay, none in the room. Don't see any online. Okay, then I will close that public hearing and open the next one. Next one is a public hearing on proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, Chapter 402, in the Village Center VC Proper Design Standards, related to State Law 30-A MRSA Sections 4364 and 4364-A regarding affordable housing projects and housing density. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on that ordinance change? Don't see any in the room. Don't s... Uh, go ahead.
I just have a question.
Could you step to the podium, please?
Sure, I know it's kind of...
Is this...
I apologize.
Is this related to the...
What you just said, because I don't understand what you just said. I need a better explanation.
Of what a pub, what the public hearing is?
Where, no, I understand what a public hearing is.
Yeah.
Where is this property that you're speaking of?
It's not a property, it's an ordinance change that the council is implementing.
And what does that pertain to?
Pertains to what I just read, which is state standards related to affordable housing projects and density in the Village Center.
Okay.
Read the whole packet if you want.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
It's in the hallway as well.
So this is something that the council is working on, and the process is that they work on amending an ordinance, they have what's called a first reading, and then when it passes, goes through the first reading process, the ordinance change or the potential change comes to the planning board for a second reading where public input is heard again, and then it goes back to the council where it's potentially implemented at that time. So we're sort of halfway through that review and public comment process.
Thank you.
So you have one more chance. When?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, right? Or you could, if you have something tonight, we'd be happy to hear it.
If I could have a minute, I could explain.
Affordable housing within Gray Center?
So I can't explain this whole thing to you, it's 20 or 30 pages of amendments that have been driven by the state.
We can provide a summary if you want.
Yeah, I could, if you give me a minute, I think I could.
Sure.
Cliff notes.
Yeah, Cliff notes would be fine.
The title is somewhat misleading or not very informative. The state has passed a law that would allow people to build accessory dwelling units on their property under a variety of different circumstances, some of which we haven't completely figured out yet. That's the bulk of what's driving that ordinance.
I know what we're talking about.
If I may.
Sure.
So the accessory dwelling piece has already been passed by the town.
Right.
So those are now allowed anywhere, there's a single-family home outside of Shoreland zoning. This piece that we're talking about tonight is specific to the other two pieces of the state law, and it's a state law. It's coming down for all municipalities to implement if they want to be in accordance with state law. So this part is about housing density, increasing the number of dwelling units that are allowed on a lot. It's complicated, that's why what you're holding is pretty thick. And the second part is about affordable housing developments, like in Avesta or that type of thing, and making those more, they're trying to make towns, make the zoning, make those easier to build, basically, from the state level. So like Dan said, it's complex, there's a lot of little changes we had to make in our ordinance to implement the state law, and that's what we're looking to do, but there are effectively three parts to it. And some of the ADU stuff that we already passed is sort of tied into this piece too, and it is complicated, but the upshot is that it increases density.
And there will be more coming.
Thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome. So anybody else have anything on that one?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I had one small comment and...
Sure, well, let me, I'll close the public part.
Okay, all right, great. Didn't want to miss my...
Yeah, yeah, so close the public portion and then ask for any board comment.
It's, I might be mistaken as I was reading through these many pages, but I believe there might be one spot where a capitalized term wasn't capitalized in a later spot, so just do a little word check and make sure about that. My note was that it was affordable, it was like development, I wrote it down here. I just said be consistent with capitalized terms, so just double-check that the capitalized terms are all capitalized throughout all the changes. There's so many changes, it could have been missed, but that's important stuff, so anyway, that's my only comment.
Thank you. Tamara?
Yeah, I guess, I, just a clarifying question. And it felt like from how it read that all the recommendations in here are just to bring it into compliance with state law, and it's nothing beyond that, like we're basically just meeting the state minimum.
Yeah, council, I can speak to that, yeah.
Yep, that's basically what, there are, as Kristin mentioned, there's new terms and there's having to change the terms in our ordinance so they reflect the new terms and change the definitions, so Kristin and Doug have done an awful lot of work, actually, sort of combing through stuff, trying to make sure that not only is our language consistent throughout, but that we now comply. It comes from the state creating a law before they have the rules and the rules being written after, and they haven't finished writing all the rules yet, I don't believe, so there will be more to come. And the public hearing for land use ordinances will always start at the council, come to the planning board, and end up back at the council.
And my question comes from the accessory dwelling unit, there was, we had some flexibility in how we implemented that, but this felt like there was less flexibility in regards to that.
There is, there's a lot of questions around who owns the, how do we keep, if a piece of property has been built and identified as having, as being affordable, how do you maintain that status as the property changes hands? And that's one that we haven't figured out yet, because there's different ways that you can do that.
To your question, there were a couple points where the council could have broadened. They couldn't have made it less, but they could have made it more and chose not to broaden it beyond the minimums, that was my question.
Yes, yeah, I think at this point in time, we're sort of doing what's required, just to make sure that we get that done.
Okay, thanks for all that. Moving on to new business. So we have two items here, I think two, two moves it, with public hearings, that is. First up is Hemlock Woods. This is a request by 38 Blackthorn LLC, represented by Teradyne Consultants LLC, to amend the Hemlock Woods subdivision located adjacent to Blackthorn Lane in a rural residential agricultural zoning district. The proposed amendments show Blackthorn Lane where it was actually constructed and prior lot divisions in accordance with prior enforcement that has been resolved. The proposed amendment is to create one new backlot for an existing dwelling on Tax Map 53, Lot 43-02. And I understand we have a different applicant representative here. Or are they online?
Nope, they're online.
He's in the room, okay, great. So we have had, we'd just say we have had, I'm sure you're aware, we had a workshop last month with your colleagues, so we started the background there, and it sounds like she's not able to be here tonight, so...
She's not.
You can pick up where she left off.
Yeah, she's, I'm pinch hitting as a consequence of the fact that she's on, at the hospital having a baby, which is very exciting. My name's Jeff Piampiano, I'm from Drummond Woodson. I'm joined by Tony Fernandez, who's here on behalf of the applicant, 38 Blacks, Blackthorn LLC, and Jimmy Corbion from Teradyne, who's also here and was the surveyor who submitted the application. I, I'll take Chairman Cobb's admonition about not replowing old ground, and so I understand not much has changed since the last time around, there was discussion, I believe, the last time about some open space-related concerns. Since then, we've removed or withdrawn the request to lift the open space designation and the request to, for a requirement to preserve at least eight acres of remaining space, so we're not trying to address that now. I understand from the last time that there are, that there were a couple of comments from people in the community, one related to road usage, I think that's been resolved, and the second related, as far as I understand, to a concern about, about how this affected the subdivision more broadly over the long term, and I guess my response to that is we've been trying to work with the neighbors, we don't yet know what Phase 2 looks like, anything else, anything further is going to need to come forward in a separate application before the planning board, so we're here just to resolve the very narrow issue that relates to this very narrow application. I took a spin through the subdivision requirements, which I wasn't familiar with until this afternoon. I understand there's state law requirements that need to be satisfied even in the context of an amendment, I looked at those, none of them seem even remotely relevant to this. The one thing that's, that the state law flagged is it's important to comply with the local ordinance, I took a spin through the local ordinance relating to subdivision approval, and it doesn't seem to me like there should be any controversy there either, and I reviewed the comments provided by the town planner, which we all agree with, so I'm happy to answer any questions, and as I'm sure Jimmy is as well, but I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the brief synopsis. I have, I guess I have, I do have a question. To understand the narrow scope of what you're looking to achieve, I guess I'd like to understand more about why you feel like you need to achieve it in this way, like why do you need just this one small incremental lot creation? And the reason I ask is because, at least where I was coming from, and I won't speak for the rest of the board, but my recollection was that you kind of had the straw poll vote that people were good with that in connection with what the overall plan was and what was happening with the open space and what, you know, what you intended to do and how much and where and all that, and I know you're working with the Open Space Committee on that.
Yeah.
Because I noticed, unless I missed it, the wording that was on the, you know, one of the original, I don't know which one now because I have like five inches of papers behind me, you know, read, you know, open space to be, you know, under conservation easement, so there was an intent at one point that that space be preserved, and it's not on your new plan that we would be approving tonight, so I guess I'm wondering, is your position that you're silent on it, it's not shown, I'm just a little uncomfortable with that, like what you're trying to achieve here?
Yeah, so I'll do my best, and then I'll probably lateral to Jimmy. What I understand is that there was an open space designation in the original subdivision application. A common space. That this particular application affects less than 1% of that common space, and I guess, and I think I can speak for these folks, is that to the extent that there are open space issues that show up, that need to be addressed in a subsequent application, I think we'll have to deal with those then, but this is a very exclusive, this is limited to a dwelling that's been in place for 30 years, and at least from my standpoint, it doesn't look to me like there's anything about what's being proposed that's not permitted under the criteria for the very narrow subdivision proposal, amendment that's being proposed.
Okay, so I was thinking about it in the opposite, which is yes, I understand you're creating a lot for the house, but there's, now there's the bigger backlot, which is, I guess my point is that that is encumbered the same way that it was previously.
It is, and it will continue to be, and it will have to come forward in a subsequent amendment if there's going to be any, any, any development that happens in connection with that.
Okay, so that, that's what I was basically getting at, is that if, you know, it's the way it is now, and there's some level of encumbrance due to that statement, and if you create the two lots, you would agree that that same level of encumbrance still exists, whatever it is?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have for questions for now.
If I may, that...
Sure.
That, that language is before you tonight as part of the motion for consideration on page six.
Okay.
To retain the common area designation.
Mr. Chair, just asked a clarifying question.
Sure, go ahead.
You mean, instead of showing it as it is now, which is nothing is on the plan, to add it to, a condition of our potential, condition of our approval would be to ask for that designation to be added back.
Correct, so when they, when they came before you last time, the feedback they received was that you didn't want to nullify the open space at this time. So we did work with the applicant to develop language that reflected that, and it's on the face of the plan that would be presented for you to sign, should you choose to pass the motion as it's presented tonight.
So it is on this plan?
It's not on the one that you have in your packet, that's, I don't think it is. That's language we worked through during this time, with some back and forth.
I felt like where we landed at the workshop was that we wanted to see the bigger picture with this lot creation, that's why I was asking all those questions. So where, didn't see that in number six.
So the proposed language, should you choose to pass it tonight, would retain language that, that keeps the open space as it is? It says like this amendment that you're signing off on only creates that lot, it doesn't touch the open space at all at this juncture, it's something you would deal with, as you said, in Phase 2.
Last two lines.
Point of information, I think on the plan I'm looking at, Note 19 says it's, you've got to get your cheaters on the reader.
Jim Corbion, Teradyne Consultants. So Note Number 19 of the plan before you, the backlot created by this amendment also contains a small portion of the common area. The common area designation, as shown on the original subdivision plan, is not altered or removed via this plan amendment.
Thank you for finding that, I was looking in the same area that it was on the original plan.
And that's in item number, the second paragraph of item number five?
Yeah.
In the draft motion that was provided by the town.
Okay. Anything else, Melinda?
Um, no.
Tamara? I don't think we have any other questions for you. Okay, because this one's a, a lot of pages here. So no waivers, town staff comments, okay? So there were four staff comments, do you have any issues or concerns with the comments from the staff? This is on, I'm referring to page four?
No.
Of the memo?
You're right here. On page four, I'm sorry.
Four of the planner's memo.
No, no, no concerns.
No concerns or comments.
Okay, so if nothing else from the board, I'll open it up for a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this agenda item? Don't see any in line or online or in the room, so I'll close the public hearing, okay? So discussion points, I guess, I think we covered mine, I had missed, I wasn't looking in the notes, so I didn't see that, so I was not inclined to move forward with this until we saw more information, but with them recognizing, I'm comfortable, I think, as long as there's a recognition that it doesn't change anything with the open space, so the idea that there's this lot doesn't make it any different when Phase 2 comes, or if it comes, as far as that particular item. So with that understanding, I think I'm okay with this, or I am okay with it. Any other, anything else?
I don't have any other comments, but I'm glad you raised that, that would have been important to me as well.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, so I guess when you come back for your Phase 2, that will, is definitely, you get the, you get the hint, that's going to be a big deal, so do you work with the Open Space Committee, and we'll see you when we see you on that piece of it. So as for tonight, what's in front of us, anybody care to make a motion? So we have to find it complete first, and then, and then we can consider it.
You're going to take it? Here I go.
There'll be plenty for all.
I know, right? All right, move to find the application by 38 Blackthorn LLC to amend the Hemlock Woods subdivision located adjacent to Blackthorn Lane in the rural residential agricultural zoning distant, district, complete per 401.7.1E. Do I need to read the rest as well? I think I do, right?
I would, yeah.
Okay. The proposed amendment shows Blackthorn Lane where it was actually constructed and prior lot divisions in accordance with prior enforcement that has been resolved. The proposed amendment includes creating one new backlot for an existing dwelling on Tax Map 53, Lot 43-02. Given the relevant extensive history and nature of this lot split proposal, the planning board determines that many, that many subdivision submittals are not applicable for this amendment. I second.
And any discussion? All in favor? It's three-nothing, so it's deemed complete, and now who would like to make the motion for approval? I think, I would read the preamble and then refer to one through six.
Excellent.
I move to approve the application by 38 Blackthorn LLC to amend the Hemlock Woods subdivision located adjacent to Blackthorn Lane in a rural residential agricultural zoning district. The proposed amendments show Blackthorn Lane where it was actually constructed and prior lot divisions in accordance with prior enforcement that has been resolved. The proposed amendment includes creating one new backlot for an existing dwelling on Tax Map 53, Lot 43-02, subject to the following conditions noted in the memo, one through six. I second.
Discussion. I just, I have a bit of discussion, Kristin, I would just ask, in the minutes that you do specifically capture the board's position on the open space, I know it's in the, I know it's on the plan and everything, but I just wanted 100% clear that negotiations about what happens with open space and how much is to come at a future, at a future time, so that's, you know, just note that all three of us have that as a high priority. Thank you. All in favor? And that's three-nothing, so we are approved. And that's three-nothing, so we are approved. You got your lot division.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we'll need to pick this up yet, they'll sign them out here, there may be some, some minor amendments we need to make to those. We've got them very close, but I wanna make sure it matches all of us.
All right. Okay, next up. This is a request by McDonald Brothers Custom Builders LLC, represented by DM Roma Consulting, engineers for planning board preliminary plan review of a proposal to create three lots in the Campbell Acres subdivision on the seven point one-two plus or minus acre parcel near Nine Jenny Drive, map fifty-six, Lot seventeen dash twenty-eight dash oh-three in the Rural Residential and Agricultural Zoning District. This proposal is subject to major subdivision review. JP, welcome.
Thank you. My name is JP Conley, I work for DM Roma Consulting Engineers, and I'm here representing the McDonald Brothers Custom Builders for Campbell Acres amended subdivision. I will try to be as brief as I can, we've made a lot of changes to the plan set since we last talked.
Yeah, I mean, be thorough, I'm not saying, don't, just focus on what changed.
Sure, sure.
We've seen you a couple times, we know the background.
Yep, we've added several elements to the plan. In particular, the finite details that we've done are adds snow storage areas, we've regraded the driveways, and are showing spot grades on these driveways as well. So as you go up the driveway, you can see spot grades to determine the grades as, at will. And in particular, I'm also showing a little less tree clearing on Lot One, and I've relocated, relocated the well. In addition to that, the well exclusion zone shown on the plan is more of a single ellipse than the integrated bubbles that we've shown before, as requested by the town staff. And if you don't mind, I'd like to just go right through some town staff comments first.
Yep.
And then, you know, take it from there. So, in particular, we'll start with comment number one. The driveway location at Lot One was a problem in terms of plowing. I believe there's the, the common consensus on that. The driveway location at the end of the road is, was, was chosen to kind of accommodate the, the thought that, or the, the direct input that the clearing and the buffer on Lot One should be increased to provide the Fosters, the neighbors to the, the west of us, more buffer. We've met with the Fosters several times now, and we've agreed to provide some additional landscaping in, in the area where it shows up better on the presentation plan. But generally, this is a fall image, and in this fall image, you can tell there's more deciduous trees in the vicinity, right there, than evergreen trees. So we're, we're proposing to at least a minimum of six new conifer trees. In addition to that, so we're, we're elected to, you know, we can put the driveway opposite and come off more typical, you know, perpendicular to the road, but that would mean that that driveway would really interfere with that tree clearing buffer that we tried to achieve. But if the board prefer, we can go back to that. Anyways, number two, granite waiver, oh, excuse me, I should have mentioned, we asked for a, an additional waiver for the dead-end road, the streetlight requirement. That was requested in the, I think around the September twentieth submittal of this plan set. We are okay with the partial waiver for the granite monuments, and we have shown areas where we're proposing granite monuments versus actual rebar pins. Let's see, the soil study, we are still requesting a waiver from a high-intensity soil study. In lieu of the, that, we are providing HHE two hundreds with nitrate plumes, and rescinding the waiver for the hydrogeologic assessment. Comment three regarding the butter comments and the town engineers review the technical aspects in regards to lot shape. Basically, the last portion of the statement says that staff does not view these lot shapes as being outside the scope of the ordinance, as they are not flag or spaghetti lots, and do not attempt to join narrow strips of land to create enough land area. In addition to that comment, the towns engineer responded accordingly as well. And so with regards to the specific town engineering comments that were provided to us, we only have a couple of, all the comments I can address. And we've looked at that at length, and I have no issue with any of them. I will ask the board's input and feedback for the, with regards to treatment of, of the project stormwater. On the plan set, we have a detention basin proposed. We're gonna remove that detention basin and install an underdrain filter basin. But with the location of that detention basin, I am going to miss a portion of the road. Now, we've looked at alternate locations, and to the northeast, at the intersection of Jenny Drive and the proposed subdivision road, we can cut the hill out and install our underdrain filter basin in this area. I'm not sure if you can see it really well on my, zoom in on this. So in this vicinity right here, make that a little bit better. So I can meet and treat the majority of the road, and, 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 and achieve a better impervious ratio in treatment. But the, the sacrifice is, we'd be cutting into that fifty-foot buffer from the scenic road, and the basin will be right adjacent to the road, or the property limits at the road. We still think that the basin location where it is could provide enough of treatment for the, the project site. I will be missing a portion of about a hundred and fifty feet of road as a result. No houses, all the, all the development of the lots will go into the basin as it is. I can achieve it, I just, we need direction on if, if you guys would like that relocated to that location, or if you prefer this location and a slightly less margin of treatment.
Do you wanna give feedback on that now?
I, I- I don't generally go for less treatment. I, I guess I'm curious as to why they can't be handled separately. Like, why you can't provide treatment for the road, and, and without going into the buffer as much, and still use your other treatment system. There's plenty of linear treatment systems done on roadways all the time.
Well, we would need, I mean, it's a matter of economics and, and logistics. For us to take, what I would do is relocate that basin down to the edge of the road. As far as linear treatment, I think you're speaking to like a filter device or something to that effect. We, those would not provide the level of treatment, we would need to capture the whole entire project. So, I mean, the, ultimately, the solution is, you know, I mean, we can keep both and add another, but they, I still would have to cut out trees, knock out the stone wall, and, and regrade into the hill. The reason being is that the road is steep, and the grades on, up at the face of the lot are steep, so we chose to put in the detention basin, and now the treatment basin, sort of more up on the plateau, where it would be easier to grade, easier to maintain, and not really wreck the existing conditions out there. I mean, for us to do this, we're, we're at about an elevation of three twenty-six, three twenty-eight over there. That would be the bottom of the basin, and that basin would probably extend up to about the three forty contour. So I'd have a steep slope on one side of the basin coming down into it. It, it's feasible, it would work, I just would, I, you know, whatever you guys prefer, we're open to, if it's, you know, there's, I'm not sure that providing the additional treatment really would benefit, we're talking about a matter of fifteen percent, twenty percent difference, so.
Hold on. My, my opinion is I do not wanna see you cutting into that buffer. Keep it out back.
I, I, I support that as well.
My concern, and I definitely don't want to see that either, I suspect the neighbors would also prefer to keep that buffer, and it's, it's good that we have them here and engaged. My concern is that in retaining it, if, if, if we've sacrificed fifteen or twenty percent, doesn't sound like too much as we sit here, but it's steep slopes, and we don't wanna, this is technical, I mean, this is where, we are not engineers, but I, and I would lean into town staff to make sure that what's proposed meets what's required. If it's truly subject to our decision, then I, I would lean towards deferring to your plan where you're not cutting into the buffer, but I, I want that, the water from the road and the driveways and everything treated, so that we don't end up with a bad water situation on Jenny Drive. That is not okay either.
I agree. The other problem with adding the basin, now, there, there's, there's trade-offs. There are pros and cons for both of these situations, and how we solve them. If I were to put the basin down on the road, my discharge point would be the road swell from that, that device. Right now, we have two drainage divides on the project site, and, and one of them, there's a ridge, I don't know if you guys remember, but as you came up the hill, we kind of crested, and there was a ridge, and some of the water went off to the west, and, and, and basically, once we were at that ridge, anything for that, between us and that ridge, would go to the road. We're directing all that water into that basin on the ridge, and taking it through a, a more of a natural drainage channel, which, it, again, it, it's one, or, you know, it, 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 there's not really, it's just, it's not, it's a balancing act of how much we wanna cut trees and further develop and, and further grade the site versus providing, you know, basically, a treatment for an extra hundred and twenty-five, thirty feet of road, so.
Does staff approve of this approach, not, not cutting into the buffer?
Which, which comment are you referencing now?
We're referencing comment, I think it's the third comment from Will, from the town engineer, stating that, that we need to meet chapter five hundred treatment standards. So when we looked at, you know, basically addressing that comment, and, yeah, so, comment three.
Okay, yeah, this isn't something I don't think we've been able to really go back and forth on, or talk about with Will, or reviews, I, I can't really speak to it, I'm not an engineer either. I'd, I'd wanna get Will's input
Yep.
on, on the proposed answer to his comment.
I think that's appropriate, too.
But we're at preliminary right now, not at all.
Yeah, it is a fine detail, you know, in terms of design, which I, I believe we might have some extra time between this hearing and the next, so it'd give us an opportunity to address that with Will and town staff, and if they don't like what we propose, we can alter it to their satisfaction. I'm confident of that.
Yeah, and just to clarify, my comment didn't mean I'm okay with, like, not treating twenty percent.
Oh, I understand.
I just said I don't want you cutting into the buffer.
No, I, I, I get it, I, I mean, I'm the same way, I'm a rule guy, I just wanna follow the rules. And the, the fact of the matter is, we aren't developing the whole site, so there are some benefits to that in terms of reduction in, in treatment that we are required to meet for chapter five hundred. So it has to be designed and looked at to be, you know, generated, but I'm, I'm, with, with what we've looked at today in terms of how we can feasibly address this, these are what we came up with, and it, it really, from my standpoint, the percentages that I was getting just on the rough numbers, it wasn't drastic. We weren't too far off from meeting what was required with the basin in its current location.
So I appreciate what you're saying, I also likewise, even though I didn't talk about the buffer, I don't want the buffer going away, I also would just say that there's, all we're seeing are more drastic and more intense storms, and so if we're not meeting flooding standards, I just feel like I'm not doing my job here.
Oh, we are meeting the flooding standard.
Well, Will also mentions that, so, in that same comment. So he, he talks about chapter five hundred and basic flooding standards, so. So you've heard our, we, we don't need to go back and forth, but you know where we stand on this.
Certainly.
Thank you.
All right, keep going.
I think that's it for me.
Okay, so I'm just gonna pick up with the memo, 'cause that's how I keep track of
Certainly.
where we're at, and you were maybe jumping around a little bit, I'm not sure I followed, so I just wanna make sure that I'm referring to page eight, which is the towns consulting engineer.
Yeah.
So you're good with, and will incorporate all of those comments? And number three, there's some discussion as to how you're going to do that.
Yeah, that's really just what I was looking for, it was just what you guys gave me.
Everything else, you're good with what he's asking and you're planning to do?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. And then, he also had, I had asked at the last meeting that he'd consider, and you touched on, you may have touched on some of this or not, but consider some of Mr. Light's comments. And there's comments and responses in that section. Do you have concerns with any of that?
I mean, we're again gonna defer to the town staff and, and town engineers' response to those. You know, it's really not my job to address every butter's comment, even though I'm doing my best to, and completely sympathize with what they're asking.
Yeah, I, I would only ask you to speak to, I think, Will's responses, because that's what we're going to rely on, since he's the town engineer.
Sure, I mean, I don't mind reading them if you, if that's what you're, but, but again, the, generally what the town engineer and town staff have said, we agree with.
Okay, that's, that's my question to you.
Yep.
If you're okay with those responses, because that's what we're gonna lean on.
So if you want, we can kind of go through those quickly, but, all right.
I only wanna cover anything that you disagree with.
Certainly.
Okay. So then, town staff, so starting on page ten, they've got a number of comments following to half of page eleven.
Yep.
Do you have concerns on anything there?
Just the driveway location, which we talked about, which is comment number one. We can address and make it more typical in nature, and, but the road's not gonna be maintained by the town. It'll be maintained by the HOA or Road Association. The plowing in snow storage areas, we're accommodating. And this, you know, we generally have this issue when the houses are very close to the setbacks, where if they come off the end of the road, it's difficult to maintain snow storage areas and plow them. But with Lot One being further set back from the edge of the road, with a fairly long driveway, there's opportunities there, I think more than ample opportunities for snow storage on either side of the road, which are great locations, because they both drain to the filter basin. And so it, it's a compromise again in terms of, do we address the more of a typical perpendicular driveway approach, or do we try to create more of a neighborly concession with less tree clearing and, and buffer?
So my comment on that one would be, I think it's okay to do it your way, you've specifically- specifically been, um, told by the town in the memo that it's not typically approved that way. And I think I would request that you have it on the face of the plan, um, something to that. I don't know what the exact wording is, but, you know, whether it's a note that says this configuration is not acceptable, you can come up with the wording, but that it wouldn't be approved as a town road. So what I, what I wanna, what I wanna avoid is...
We don't meet, we don't meet the road section to be approved as a town road.
Right. But what I wanna avoid is ten years down the road, some residents coming and saying, coming to the council and asking that it be approved. And then they're looking for a waiver because the driveway is off the hammerhead. Um, so, you know, you, you can do you, but make sure that everyone is aware that what you're doing.
I think we've already got you covered. Uh, note fifteen on the subdivision plan, on the general notes, the last one, it says, "All roads in the subdivision, uh, excuse me, subdivisions shall remain private roads and are to be maintained by the developer or the lot owners. All roads in the subdivision approved, as proposed, do not meet the town standard for public road maintenance and shall not be accepted as public road or maintenance by the town."
Okay. All right. Um. I guess the other thing that was a topic and then, um, Mr. Light had brought it up was the three to one ratio and any discussion, discussion there. Um. So the, the town, I think, the staff position was that, um, their intent meets the ordinance and that was the engineer's, um, interpretation as well. I don't know if we want to make a, an interpretation on, on that or feel the need or feel the need to talk about it.
I, I'd be inclined to defer to this town staff's opinion there that it was acceptable.
Likewise.
Yeah, I think I'm in the same boat. I feel like it's, it may be a bit odd that the intent was not to, you know, gain access to water or do some bizarre thing that, you know, it looks like a typical configuration. So I can't really find anything that says that configuration is, um, kinda out of bounds. That's where I'd be on that one as well. Okay. Um. Public hearing, let's move to that. So we had a public hearing last time. We didn't have a forum. Um, so we're gonna do it again to formally have our public hearing. So is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak on this application? Anybody in the room? Any takers? Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Rick Light from thirty-five Fran Circle. Um, first I want to commend JP and his crew for, I think they've done a pretty good job of the plans. They're well-prepared and they've addressed a lot of the comments. Um, overall, again, I wanna reiterate something I said at the last meeting is that overall, I, I don't have a problem with duplexes. I just wanna go on the record with that. You know, we need housing. Um, we all know that, that need and, and this is, and this is, I, I did have an issue and I do have an issue with this being in conformance with character with the neighborhood, but not to the degree that it's upsetting to the point where I would go bonkers over it. I mean, I think it's, I just don't, I don't think these are appropriate, but then again, I don't think they're gonna harm the neighborhood. I don't take that position. Um, on the other hand, I do have some, some comments and I, I think the board has already, I guess, made my comments pretty short and brief because, um, I'm, I did get a chance to write a letter and thank you, uh, Kristen, for putting the material on the, on the, on the, online. I wasn't able to get to it till this, late this weekend and was able to get a letter out this morning addressing some of the technical comments. So I'm just gonna keep my comments brief. Um, I'm not gonna get into the lot width and length ratio because I think the board's already made their position on that. I tend to disagree.
I will say, if you have something new that you feel could sway our minds, we're happy to hear it. Don't not go there just because we talked about that already.
Could I use the board?
Sure.
For two seconds?
Yep.
I, I'm just gonna make my position, cause this has come up before with other projects and I just, so it's sort of a precedent setting and, and I, whatever the way the wind flows or blows or which way the board wants to go is fine, but I just wanted to sort of make a position that maybe it's done either with a graph, a graphical representation. See if I can copy the road here. So bear with me. Here's, I'm gonna focus pretty much on lot one. And lot two. This is. And something like this. Let me get that right. Hang on a second. Bear with me. Something like this. It's not quite drawn to scale, but this is lot one, Fosters, uh, lot two and three. So in terms of the subdivision requirement of thirteen, uh, one point B point four, the length to width ratio, what you've got in this lot is you've got a long narrow lot, has plenty of frontage, it's got hundreds of feet of frontage. This is Jenny Drive. And you've got frontage all the way up here, here, and here, if I've drawn this right, and back on this leg here, and I think you might even have a little on the end there. Bear with me for a second. Nope, it ends, yes, it ends, right, bear with me, I'm sorry. Yeah, right here. So you've got all kinds of frontage. Now, frontage is defined in the ordinance, the zoning ordinance as, and the front setback is defined as a line that is, that is, that goes from sideline to sideline along a, a parallel to a street line unless you're on a curve, it's on a radius. So let's, let's take an example. This portion of the lot has several hundred, three hundred feet of frontage or something like that. You've got a fifty-foot setback on a front line and rear line is fifty, that would make this a rear line. Again, depending on how the code and staff interpret it, but just from a loose interpretation, you've got a rear line here and that would be fifty feet. You've got about twenty-five feet or twenty feet left in the middle. And of course, this is an easement that you can't build on. You essentially have this entire, in this portion of the lot, if you take fifty feet, you're already into the neighbor's property. So the building window, the building window for this lot starts here and, bear with me for a second, you know, you've got a setback line of twenty feet, fifty, twenty, something like this. And it starts from a point here. So this part of the lot, which is about fifty percent in the state of the area, is completely undevelopable. Fine, whatever, so, so be it. So the developable portion of the lot, which is the other, say roughly half of the lot, the frontage, the frontage for the developable portion of the lot, not the lot itself, but for the developable portion with the house being here, with the duplex being here, is defined by not a, a length, but by a single point. The single point gives you a fifty-foot radius for a setback. And this line here, I didn't draw this quite right, I apologize. Off the end of the cul-de-sac. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm down here. I'm sorry, I'm down here. Let me, let me, uh, back this up a little bit and I apologize. People on the screen watching and drawing up. So you've got basically a point here, I'm sorry, that starts the frontage for this lot. And there's only a point on that lot that is, there's a section here which is part of lot two. I'm sorry, this is lot one here, coming back something like this. My apologies to the board, the public. So essentially, there's a, there's a point here that creates the frontage for this lot. This lot doesn't have, lot one does not have frontage on the road here in, in, in terms of the building window. Building window being here, I think I drawn this quite right. It doesn't have frontage on the road, the end of the road. The end of the road is encumbered by, as I understand it, easement. It's just creating fifty feet and a hundred and fifty feet for lot two. This is the frontage for lot two. Frontage for lot one is this whole stretch. Okay, fine. But in the actual area of development, the only place you could build is on this outer part of the lot, this triangle portion of the lot. The only place the developable portion of the lot has frontage is a point, which then gives you a fifty-foot setback on the plan. Probably better shown as that we're blowing up a little bit, but it's, it's really confusing. So I won't get in, you know, I'm just trying to make a point. So if the board's fine with that, I think just, it sort of sets a precedent for how you can use lot, you know, the lot length to width ratio and use odd, odd configurations. And in that section, the ordinance talks about odd configurations. So I just wanna leave it with that, the board, that I, I just disagree on that. Um, it's been a predicament before where these kind of lots may not have been, you know, acceptable. But I leave, you know, that's the board's decision. I just wanted to present the case that it, from that perspective, the entire lot frontage that's really the, the actual frontage is in, are in areas that can't be built. If that's fine, you know, so, so be it. I call that an odd lot. Okay. So anyway.
Yeah. Thank you for walking us through that. That was, that was helpful.
I'm sorry for the graphics.
Nope. That was good. What I would say is, um, staff can, you and Doug, and you can consider that if, if you'd like. I mean, that was, we're not gonna sit up here and judge a, a marker, a graph from a public comment. So, um, but that's, that was very helpful. I didn't grasp exactly what your concern was from your ladder. So I thought it was just more about the, the, um.
It is.
What's width and what's the length, so.
Right. And, and, and to the chair, the members, the chair, if I take this portion of the lot and carry on what we were just talking about, the portion of the lot, let me draw it right, at the point of the front yard setback, which is fifty feet from here, is only sixty-three feet wide. At that point of the lot, it's actually, I drew this wrong stuff, sixty-three feet wide. That's the point where you measure the frontage based on the zoning ordinance. You measure the frontage parallel to the front from sideline to sideline and it's sixty-three feet. And the depth of the lot, front to back, is about three hundred and fifteen. So you've got a five to one lot ratio on the buildable portion of the lot, not to mention the rest of the lot, which is, you can't build on. So it's, it's, I, I, I just think it's worth a little study as to how the board and the town wants to interpret that portion of the ordinance. If, if you're fine with it, fine, but I think it's just, I think this could come up again, I guess. That's my point. And it's nice to have some clarity as to how it is defined. So, uh, we quit, the other issues, I think JP's done a good job with the buffers, um, meeting with the Fosters, and I can't speak for the Fosters, although I've certainly talked to them. Um, I still would just make the point that, um, I would recommend, just as an butter, as a, you know, individual, that the buffers along the, the Foster line be actually codified as a dimensional line of twenty-eight or thirty or twenty-five feet. So it's clear. What happens in, in the real world is that you show a tree line, which is great. It's on a plan that kinda has a wiggly line on it and the intent is sort of shown. And then five years later, the project is sold and no one knows about that line. It's not in the deed and people, you know, start cutting. I just, I know this stuff is difficult to enforce, but I just bring that up. Um, a couple of tech, just minor things, and again, I think JP's done a great job in sort of addressing some of these comments. Um, septic issue, I think we'll wait to see the hydrogeologic and septic locations. I think, you know, it'll probably all work out. Um, I, I hadn't seen staff comments till just this evening and, um, I guess Coral Palmer picked up on the same thing. I, I just would bring, as Will did, to the attention of the engineer that, that you may or may not need a second pole in there, cause you're, typically you can't get more than two hundred, two twenty feet from a transformer pad or, or pot to, uh, uh, residents without, uh, upping your, your wire gauge. So you've got a long line from that pole, a long distance to lot one. C and P may, may require a second pole or a different design, but that's, that's the final plan detail. Um, uh, quickly, fire protection seems to be identified and addressed in the staff memo for a recommendation for a note that's very clear. Um, my comment in my memo was that, that there's a note, uh, sixteen, sixteen on the subdivision plan that would, and it suggested that sprinklers are intended to be constructed. Uh, the prior subdivision plan, uh, that the board approved in two thousand and twenty-two required that it. And I just, I noticed that the staff has put together a potential finding and conditional notes saying that sprinklers will be required. So there's no, uh, miss, no unclarity about that. Um, one thing I did notice, and I think it's just a technical thing that maybe JP could review with the, with the town DPW, is, is there is a culvert on, I'm sorry, there is a swell on the side of the road. It's about eighteen inches deep. And it was actually just regraded by the town last year when they paved the road. Um, I think you may need a culvert at the, at the entrance, right at the entrance. You might wanna look at that. The, the aerial topo doesn't show much of a swell because it's aerial topo or lidar. Um, might wanna take some ground shots there, but you may, I would just suggest, you know, conferring with, with public works, you may need a culvert at the entrance. Um, I'll be, I'll finish up here and be on my way. Um, a couple of things, I just, I just sort of have a, just a recommendation again. I think they did a good job adding the Foster's house. I think it's helpful on the plans to sort of, to using Google Earth and other means to, to dovetail in the tree lines and in actually adding in Fran Circle. You don't see it on this picture, but on the subdivision plan, adding in Fran Circle in the corner and where the, all the water goes into the culvert. So it gives you a sense of context. We talk about the point of analysis for drainage being at the corner of Jenny Drive and Fran Circle, but it doesn't really show the roadway. So I would just, just suggest adding, just, you know, close enough, not, not by survey, but it just really helps with the context. I think that's the bulk of my comments. And again, I, I, you know, I have personally no problem with, with the duplexes. You know, I think single families would fit better, but I think, you know, they can be done in a way that can be, you know, they can be accommodating, they can be a good quality project. And, um, I think some of these technical issues, if once addressed for final, you know, I think they'll do a good job with that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. And nobody online, so I will close public comment. All right. So now, I guess first up, we can talk about waivers. And we can take them one, oh, oh, you're just coming back. Okay.
I can respond to some of those if you'd like me to.
Uh, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
I won't talk about the lot width. Um, but on all other aspects, uh, Mr. Light is correct. And, and I believe, um, so with regards to lot ones, uh, that underground length is about three hundred and twenty feet. Uh, what we intend to do is add an additional transformer at the end of the road. Um, I, that will have to be coordinated with CMP and ultimately what they decide drives us, but, um, that's our intent at this point.
Mm-hmm.
With regards to the tree line, um, that we have a specific note on the subdivision plan that says the tree line shall remain as it is on the plan in, in perpetuity. This plan will be recorded. It, it acts as the, the mechanism in the vehicle for any enforcement in the future. If the tree lines are cleared to the property limits or, and we've actually run that situation on straight line road. Um, the culvert at the entrance.
Sorry, is your tree line also referring to your, um, new plantings as well?
Yes. We're gonna, the plantings will be actually supplemented within the existing tree line. So there, so we're not gonna cut in additional areas to plant. We're going to just supplement the area behind the tree line, between us, the tree line and Fosters with additional plantings. So supplementing what, what is there for tree line.
So and you're gonna mark those on the plan?
Yep, we can show those. Yep.
And you're gonna cover it by basically memorializing that no cut?
Yes.
Of the stuff that you.
We, that will be on the subdivision plan. We'll say, you know, plant a minimum of six.
Yep.
You know, whatever species that the landscaper chooses. I'm not very good with trees, but, um. So with regards to the culvert at the road, we definitely understood that situation. Um, you know, it was very clear to me that when we went out to the first site walk, that I needed to provide additional topo. So I have gone and created additional topo, um, that we picked up from about fifty feet, um, east and west of the intersection and outlined the swell. I can't get an eighteen inch culvert to cross underneath our road without cutting into the ground another two to three feet. So essentially I'd be creating a sump at the driveway. So to correct that, what I've done is I created a swell that can be shown here. So I'm gonna take all this water coming down from the high point of Jenny Drive. It comes in and turns into our driveway and then goes out this culvert here. So eventually I've, I've, I've created the driveway culvert. So eventually, I've created the driveway culvert that Mr. Light is looking for. It's internal, and that's just to provide cover over the pipe to make that, there was a comment from the public works that they wanted that pipe to be 18-inch. So to accommodate the 18-inch pipe, I had to move it up the hill a little bit to get it to cover correspondingly. And so, again, he's correct, I need to add an easement for that, for the town, so that the town can maintain that drainage swell up to that culvert. So that will be added to the subdivision plan as well. I had a comment regarding the HHE 200s, but it escapes me. I wrote a note, but, yes, sorry about that. And then, as far as showing France Circle, I think I can either show a bubble area on the map to kind of, you know, less, a smaller scale, we're still keeping the detail of the subdivision plan, to depict that location of France Circle where that intersection and Jenny Drive interact. We do show that on the watershed maps and in a couple other maps. So if it has to be that I change the subdivision scale to accommodate that, I can do that as well.
Go ahead. Thanks. All right, so waivers. Let's cover these one by one. First up would be high-intensity soil survey. Anybody have any thoughts on granting that waiver or not?
It seems like they've referenced that they provide a medium-intensity soil survey, so they've sort of met halfway. It's, I mean, my main concern is that the soils in this area seem capable of doing all the things that they need to do, and I'm not sure that more analysis is going to give us more information beyond what we have. So I'm open to this one, but I'm willing to be persuaded by others.
I was feeling similarly, so. Where are you at with it, Tam?
I'm less inclined, but I'm also not going to be doing any persuading. Let's maybe just talk about all three, and then we might, well, yeah. We might go, grant all three at once, I guess. Streetlight. I'm in favor of this one.
Yes, it's same.
Nobody wants the streetlight.
Yeah.
Partial waiver for stone concrete monuments. That one also makes sense.
Yes.
So, anyone like to make either separate or an inclusive motion?
I'm game to do an inclusive one for all three.
Okay.
Move to approve, I move to approve the following waivers for the request by McDonald Brothers Custom Builders LLC, represented by DM Roma Consulting Engineers, to create three lots in the Campbell Acre subdivision on the 7.12 plus-or-minus parcel off Jenny Drive, map 56, Lot 17-28-03, in the rural residential agricultural zoning district, subject to major subdivision review. The two waivers are...
There are actually three, that's my error, the streetlight one will need to be added. The language is at the bottom of page 10, for your reference.
Okay. All right, I'm going to start with that one. The waivers are dead-end streetlight, this requirement per 401.13.15C4, received significant opposition from the butters who participated in the September 14th public hearing. The ordinance in Section 8.4 includes provision for the transportation system to reflect the natural and built setting proposed subdivision site. Several butters noted the abutting subdivision does not have streetlights, and this waiver seems appropriate given their input and the addition of only three lots in development. Waiver number two, the 401.13.1D requirement for stone or concrete monuments at all property corners due to the presence of stone wall markers in place at the property lines. The addition of the granite markers at various points along the road and lot lines are, as reviewed by town staff, and iron pins at other points. And waiver number three, the 401.7.4A, point A, high-intensity soil survey, given the submittal of a medium-intensity soil survey and the onsite soil types.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's three, nothing. Okay. Been a lot of page flipping tonight. Okay, so then we'll walk through, so buffering. Is it sufficient and is there any, it's not Tamara making some notes on this, I'm guessing you might have something around, is it sufficient and is it documented to the board's satisfaction?
Well, I just noted the six conifers that JP had mentioned, so I just appreciated adding those to an area that has a high percentage of trees for the buffer, so.
Yeah, and so, and just a reminder, we had the public comment that spoke to whether it's defined as a no-cut or, you know, a clearing limit versus a specific no-cut, and whether that's acceptable.
I'd be inclined to have it designated as a no-cut because sometimes it's not clear, so making that clear. And I just want to make sure I'm following along here on my memo properly. We have, when it comes to the time to make the motion, it would be preliminary, and then it's here on pages 12 and 13 of the memo where the conditions are, or where would we, would we add, or am I jumping ahead? I want to make sure.
There's been a little bit of skipping.
Yeah.
It's been a challenge. So we still have, we'd still have to deem it complete.
Okay, gotcha.
And then there's preliminary plan approval.
But the reference to the buffer would be in the preliminary plan approval section, not some other place.
Or we would tell him he needs to have it on the final plan.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
I'll get back to you in a second.
Okay.
Yeah, we've had to jump around a little bit because of that last motion that you had, and just making sure we're not missing anything.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I think the board would like to see a bit more definition around that being a no-cut.
No problem. I can make that a, I think it's standard language, I could add to the general notes on the subdivision plan, saying that the tree lines remain in place, there'll be no clearing of any trees beyond the tree line shown on the plan, except for diseased, problem trees, you know, of that nature.
Thanks. Okay, so we've got the waivers, so now it'd be completeness.
Oh, the drive one?
What's that? Oh, did, sorry. Oh, thank you. Yeah, we did talk a little bit about this, but not formally, so I guess the third item was the position of the Lot 1 driveway and snow storage, so my, I'll just say my comment again, which is it's fine, and you understand the implications of putting it there, which is one more impediment to a potential future approval as a town road.
Yes.
So I'm okay with it, with the applicant's understanding of that. Anything else?
I just really like that the reason for it is buffering, as opposed to some other reason, so.
We appreciate that.
Okay. Thanks for catching that, Tamara. So completeness.
I'm...
You guys should be jumping.
I was just going to say, do I get to do completeness?
Yes, you do.
Okay, all right.
Move to find the application by McDonald Brothers Custom Builders LLC, represented by DM Roma Consulting Engineers, complete per 401.7.1E for planning board preliminary plan review of a proposal to create an additional three lots in the Campbell Acre subdivision on the 7.12 plus-or-minus parcel off Jenny Drive, map 56, Lot 17-28-03, in the rural residential and agricultural zoning district. This proposal is subject to major subdivision review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's three, nothing. Okay, so preliminary plan approval, and let's just make sure we have some placeholders. Let's understand ahead of time what's included or not included. So 13 is a placeholder, and 14, 15, and 16, so let's get that worked out before anyone makes a motion.
And did you also, I feel like you also recommended, I know that they have number three there in regards to all roads will be private, but did you also want it noted on the plan that the driveway as designed is also, includes it from town? It's not in alignment with town?
I'm not sure that would be a condition.
Okay. I don't know where that goes.
I wanted it on the plan, so when future potential resident, we don't know if it's a rental or owners or...
Right, I appreciate that, I just didn't know if it needed to be in our approved conditions.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be a condition.
Maybe we can work on that language, or you could amend number three to say with the note regarding the Lot 1 driveway as discussed at the meeting, when JP and, like, work on that language.
I was really more interested in the plan, so someone in the future understands what happened now.
Discuss. I'm seeing one error in number 13, I think I forgot to hit enter. There's another placeholder at the end of number 13 that should technically be 14.
Okay. Oh, yeah, we need that.
That's related to the easement for the Lot 1 driveway. 27-page memo, there's bound to be a couple, so I apologize, but.
An A is an A, right?
Indeed. Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, does this mean that 13 placeholder is something we want, and then the missing 14, but the actual place, 14 placeholder, the plan to amend to show the easement area for Lot 1 driveway, but then we just discuss the fact that the snow storage isn't necessary because of the way that, or did we not?
No, I was saying that the statement that it doesn't meet approval status for the town is not necessary. I wasn't speaking to the snow storage.
Okay, gotcha. All right, so that's, we still want to...
New number 15 is just the snow storage right now, JP has reflected, I believe on one of the grading plans, it's not on the face of the subdivision plan, which is the one that will be filed with the registry.
I see.
So if you wanted it reflected there to show, like, snow is supposed to go here, that was the intent of that note, if you want to include that on the face of the subdivision plan.
Yeah. My personal thoughts on snow storage, given that this is a private road, that is never going to be anything other than a private road, and there's only three lots in a lot of places, I don't think that's super important to show a specific snow storage area, because there are a lot of options, but I'm open to being persuaded otherwise, but that's my thought on snow storage. Seems like there's a lot of choices, and we're having less and less snow, so.
That's new number 15.
I'm just imagining it may move around, and it may not really be a big deal, that's all, that's what I'm thinking.
Yep. And then number 16, well, 15, now 16 will go away because we granted that waiver.
And then, and then this, 16 is still 16.
16 is still 16, and that will stay.
And then, did you want to add a 17 that references the no-cut buffer, or no?
That makes sense.
There you go.
You ready for a motion?
Is that me? It's, you got it this one, you got it.
I thought we divided that one. All right. Okay, move to approve the application by McDonald Brothers Custom Builders LLC, represented by DM Roma Consulting Engineers, for preliminary plan review of a proposal to create three additional lots in the Campbell Acre subdivision on the 7.12 plus-or-minus parcel off Jenny Drive, map 56, Lot 17-28-03, in the rural residential and agricultural zoning district. This proposal is subject to major subdivision review and is subject to the following conditions, one through 13, what, one through 14 as presented in the memo? Did we, were we...
You could probably say one through 13, because then you're going to have to revise beyond that, right? Because that's 14.
That's 14. Okay, one through 14, one through 13 as presented in the memo. 14, the plan will be amended to show the easement area for Lot 1 driveway with the associated note on the face of the plan. We agreed we were striking snow storage, or?
I'm fine either way, like, included or not.
All right. 14, and then 15, which is represented in the memo, is 16, which is the applicant will be subject to the requirements of 401.13.18C.3.B. for developed and undeveloped areas as provided by a certified soil scientist, and 17, no-cut buffer as discussed. I don't really know.
Is there a second?
Yes, there is.
All right. Any discussion? I guess the only discussion I have is I do wish that you had chosen to go with single family, Chair Rick's sentiments, I think that would have been a better fit for the neighborhood, certainly neighbors would have been much happier since they're the ones that will be neighbors there forever, many of them, because that's where they'll stay forever, and kind of bums me out to have to approve it, but there's also the side, it is your right to do what's in the ordinance, and I respect that, and so you can do it. I guess I'll call for a vote. All in favor? It's three, nothing. So you've got your preliminary approval?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
See you next time for a final, I'm guessing.
Yes.
Thanks. Onto new business. Change my paperwork again. I guess I, my schedule is in my other packet that I'm not going to fish through, so that's fine. So first up for new business is approve the FY 2024 meeting schedule, and remember, there was one conflict?
I'm traveling in the March meeting.
Okay, so I'd be, could you guys finish up outside? Thanks, appreciate it. So I guess there's two ways we could go, I'd be happy either way. We could approve the schedule as it was presented, and then closer to the meeting, like the meeting before, if they can't attend, we could talk about rescheduling it, or...
Be cleaner if we could do it now, just from an applicant submission standpoint, just...
99% of it would be solidified.
Let's pick a, so we'll pick a date now. So it would have been February 9th, right?
No, it, March 14th.
Oh, sorry, it was the March one.
Yeah.
So it would have been, whoa, just lost my...
It would be March 14?
It would have been the 14. It would have been the fourteenth.
Normally.
And is there a proposal to move it in or out? Or do you know the availability of the room that far out?
Typically Thursday is, I believe, are available. Kyle can speak to that. He books this room, but unless, is there anything, Councilor Maguire, that you see that would be coming up in March, where the council would be?
It's far enough ahead, I'm sure you can snag it.
I think I should be on the twenty-first. Is that what we're thinking of, or the week before that?
I looked at both of those Thursdays, and either one seems fine.
We're not running any school vacation weeks or anything back in March.
No.
So holiday.
It'll be April. It's gonna be more April for high school.
Right.
Yeah.
College Vacation Week is actually the week that, of that, of our board meeting.
Of that, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, gotcha. So we're okay with that.
Already conflicted with it.
Yeah.
Um.
I don't even know in my whole, I don't even know. Hold on, let me check.
A week before, a week after.
Let me check my son's spring break at UVM. I didn't think about that.
Just note, when you make the motion, just to reference that the application deadlines will be.
Right. Is there any preference from you, Kristen, as far as like pacing of submittals or anything?
No, if I know ahead of time, we can go either way. It's kind of doing that last minute makes it a little tougher for applicants and staff to prep stuff for you. Having it ahead of time will be preferable.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out when his spring break is. Although, you know, it doesn't matter. Let's, let's go with, I, I think the, the earlier week is not going to be his spring break, so.
Right.
You go better earlier?
The earlier would be better.
Seven?
Yeah.
Sounds good. So do we have a motion for FY twenty twenty-four? Meeting schedule?
Mr. Chair, I would like to
As amended.
to move acceptance of the twenty twenty-four meeting and application deadline and schedule as amended to reflect that the March meeting would be on March seventh instead of the fourteenth.
And then if you could just reference that the submittal deadlines will also shift forward a week?
And that the submittal deadlines will also shift forward a week.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Three, nothing. Okay. All right. One fifty-two Portland Road. Okay, next up, uh, this is a request by one fifty-two Portland Road LLC represented by David St. Clair of St. Clair Associates. This is for sketch plan review of a proposal to divide the two point three eight plus or minus acre lot at one fifty-two Portland Road, tax map fifty-nine, lot thirty-one, which nineteen, and add a residential use. The property has an existing professional office use. The property is located in the commercial zoning district, and the proposal is subject to conditional use review, major subdivision review, site plan amendment review, and multi, multifamily development standards. Do we have an applicant?
Yes. Good evening. My name's David St. Clair, St. Clair Associates. I'm here on behalf of one fifty-two Portland Road LLC, present their project. The project, as presented by the chair, has morphed a little bit with the understanding that our applicant would really like to move forward with just simply the duplex with the A attached garage building. The rectangle itself doesn't change physically in size. Location is shown on the sketch plan, shown on your sketch plans provided, will not change in location. At this point, we're simply looking for a duplex with the attached garage. The parcel is located, as you can see on the plan, westerly of Portland Road and just easterly of the main turnpike. It does have some grade change up to the turnpike. The building itself would be served by public water. There is a street tap on the parcel. It would be served by private septic and power that is available at the street. The plan does show four parking spaces, two for each unit, plus it would be available parking in front of the garage that is attached. At this point, we're looking for some feedback from you folks and some direction, and available for any questions.
Okay, I guess, so the, the first question or comment I guess I would have is, in reading the back and forth between you or the applicant and Kristen, was just about the, because it sounds like he's potentially looking for the flexibility to move it to three units in the future.
At, at the time when we submitted our application, we were contemplating a third particular unit on that building, in the building in the future. And at this point, we're opting away from that third unit.
Okay, uh, let me ask it differently, because the way I read it was that potentially you were thinking of starting with two, but maybe in the future.
Correct. Our applicant has actually looked at the garage space as a benefit, so there will not be a third unit in the immediate future.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is because, uh, we want to avoid a situation where we get you an approval under the less, you know, rigorous standard for the two units. And then having your client come back in the future wanting three and running into things like, oh, we wish we put the parking in the back, and we wish, you know, the site's all wrong.
Yep. No, we, we, we do understand that, yes.
Yeah, so if we, um, don't look forward now, it could make your life very difficult in the future to keep that flexibility. So I guess the question, I mean, I want to make sure you understand that.
Yeah, we, we do understand, yes, absolutely, yep.
Because we could choose, and I'm sure even throughout the process, if you want that flexibility, you could probably work with staff to, to know which, even though the board might not require, say, parking in a certain location, it might be a wise design choice to put it where it would be under the more comprehensive multifamily review.
Correct. No, we, we do understand that, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep, just want to make sure, because the board is not generally inclined to grant a lot of waivers, so asking for a waiver for something, you know, that was self-created, isn't very likely to happen.
Right.
Right, yep. Okay.
Point of information?
Yeah, sure.
This is like, in my mind, and Kristen can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but this is like instantaneously an ADU. I mean, it immediately, what would keep it from tumbling into that?
You can't have an ADU if it's not a single family home.
Okay.
You can't have one on a duplex.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
And I wasn't sure where the hitch was. I appreciate that.
Okay. That was, that was just my first thing, um, just in reading the back and forth in the, in the memo. So we're happy to consider whatever you want.
Yep.
That doesn't matter to us, so.
Yep.
Sounds like you're interested in going just the two-unit route.
That is correct, yes, yep.
Okay. I mean, that, that was really my one thing out of the gate. Any other questions or concerns from the board?
Uh, my question, I have a question. So the third building would be a garage used by both occupants, by someone else? What, who's the garage for?
On the, on the sketch rate that we have shown here, it's a forty by ninety rectangle. We've got two units, and then that garage is attached, and it would be utilized by the occupants of the building. So it would be shared between unit one, unit two, wholly by one unit or the other unit. It depends on the, the occupants' needs.
I see. So it's like a two-car garage?
Correct, yes, yep, be an oversized two-car garage.
Um, okay.
What I don't know, um, I guess one thing that would be useful when you come back is like what you're envisioning this building to look like? We're just seeing a footprint.
Yep.
Um, so it's kind of hard to envision exactly what you're talking about, but what I don't know is, you know, when you're talking, talking about the, um, like the garage and potential sharing it, like, I don't know if we have, what restrictions we have around, like, if any, you know, how they, how they might allocate, like, there's two units and a garage, is it a two-bay garage? Is there a divider? Is it wide open, or do they both have to share it? I don't know that the town has any.
I don't think the town would weigh in on how it's used. That's, that's, that would be a usage thing if they want it to be shared without any sort of block, like to protect your stuff from the other person's stuff.
Right.
But that, yeah, right now it is proposed as, that's like a twelve hundred square foot garage attached, which is the same size as the, as the dwelling in it was proposed to be, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Um, so we just wanted to make, make sure, I think, as staff too, and that's what we're trying to convey when we had some back and forth about what we were deciding to do, that if, you know, if it's built as a garage, the codes are totally different, how it's built is totally different. So I want the, the board to be aware of that as well, the separation, um, and the, the way it's built. So if it were something, if you're thinking dwelling in it in the future, that's something we definitely need to deal with now, as soon as the chair was saying.
Yep.
But yeah, as far as like sharing it between two units or having it, I don't think, yeah, that, that doesn't get into life safety. That's like, like condo versus ownership, we, we don't, we're blind to that as a town.
Yeah, I think my big thing would be come back, when, when you come back, that you have a, well, maybe you have it now, but better than what we're reading, like a more firm idea of what you're doing and where. And, um, I was just a little uncomfortable with the flexibility part, and it might be this, it might be that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's, you know, it's gonna have to be a little bit more firm, you know.
Correct, we do, we do understand that.
Yeah.
And when we do come back, would we be submitting a minor or a major site plan? That would be one question that I would like to have answered before we leave.
That would be for Kristen.
Yeah, that's a determination that we make, uh, the planner would make, and that's something I can get back to you this week, for sure.
Okay.
Um, let me take, take a look at it, because it's, it's based on square footage and, and your site plan amendment and all of that, so. Let me go through that and get back to you this week, for sure.
That would be helpful, absolutely, yeah. Uh, we do recognize that architecture would be required as part of that submission. We do envision that the architecture would be very similar to the existing structure that's on the property. The applicant has done a pretty decent job of upgrading what building was there for his re- riser heat pumps facility. We envision that the color scheme would, uh, would match what's there as well. So it would be a, a nice blend for that whole package.
Mr. Chair, you ready to say something?
Yeah. Um, I guess our, our options may be limited based on major or minor site plan, but given that it's residential next to a commercial, um, I'd really like to see some vegetation for this residential unit. I think that really improves the, the quality of our town when our developments have residential plantings. So I'd like to see some, some plantings there.
We actually envision that there'd be some sort of a separating buffer between the two, recognizing that we do have a, um, private way that we're showing up on paper to get into that particular site for its frontage, that there would be a buffering scheme, the best we could do to, uh, give it some definition.
Yeah, especially since it's on a major road, that's, yeah, so I'd like to see that.
Just one thing, I think our plan shows six parking spaces, and I heard you say four, so you must have that in your mind, because the plan was, you were probably contemplating three at that time, is that right?
Correct. With, with, with the potential for it, um, becoming a three-unit building, there would have been two parking spots per unit. Now that we're back down to just a simple duplex, that'd be the two parking spots.
Okay.
Yep.
So you could probably have a little bit less pavement there.
There would be a little bit less pavement there. We're also envisioning it to be an island that would separate the four parking spots and the, um, garage entrance that could be planted as well.
Okay, nice.
Okay. I mean, it's early yet, yeah, I know you, I'm sure you have access to the planner's memo, but it does, again, outline all the if, thens, if you were to change your mind, so.
Yes, yep.
She's got that, um, pretty well covered for you. There's not a lot we can really, we don't even know what, which way we would review it yet, so it's hard to have much other feedback for you at this time.
I think the memo was written before, before you really nailed down.
Right, yeah.
Like a duplex, so, so yeah, we'll clean that up for you next time.
What, anything else you're looking to walk away tonight with?
I think the only last question would wind up being is if you folks feel it's necessary to have a sidewalk.
That was gonna be my next one for the floor.
I know that was something that Kristen and I talked about as we were moving forward through the process, and, you know, if it's necessary, we could set something up. If it's not necessary, um, we can forego it, and then we'll have our package ready for the next meeting.
I love sidewalks, because they really give me, um, useful information, but that being said, um, this, I'm probably not gonna get a whole lot more from a sidewalk, but I'm game for it if the rest of the board is, and I will try to be there. But I, I don't know that we would really get a lot from going there, that we won't get from plans. That's my only thought. Are sidewalks just like a requirement? I don't know if that's.
Sidewalks are, they're up to you. Oh, it's four oh one five four, so it's, uh, it's up to the board.
Um, I don't really see a big need for a sidewalk.
And that's, that is actually related to, so it's four oh one subdivision.
Oh, okay.
Sidewalks are, is typical for their site plans. But again, this one was kind of in limbo, so, um, so if we're not thinking subdivision at this point, I, I don't know, it's something that's, is necessary.
I don't see a need for one. The only thing I would reserve is if they come back and it's something that we didn't quite expect, or it was different or something.
Yeah.
I don't, I just would like to reserve the, the ability to do it later, if, if we feel like we need it when we see the next revision, so.
Agreed.
Yep.
What's gonna be, what's gonna be important, um, just reiterating what Melinda said before, is just the buffering. So, um, so that's what I always look for when I go on a sidewalk, so just understanding what that buffer screen is that you're gonna create is gonna be really helpful.
Okay.
Draw that picture for us.
Yeah.
And right now, the, the little, this is where the existing tree line is, is that's shown on the, on the plan
That is correct, yeah.
that we have, right? So, so obviously cleared, um, to make room for this, so, all right, yeah, I think.
Yeah, as we come back with our fully engineered plans, um, we'll have tree lines at the grading limits, and we'll, you know, infill what we need to separate them out.
Good.
Yep.
All right, um, so I guess, Kristen, if you happen, I'm not gonna burden you with remembering, but if you happen to remember, you could, um, put a placeholder in your memo when they come back to reconsider a sidewalk, but don't, um, don't kill yourself trying to remember that. If you do, please put it in. All right, I think that's it. We don't have much for you now. Or do you see any back when, when you're ready?
Absolutely, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Hairy Estates. This is a.
Also non-asked.
What's that?
I'm sorry, I just said also non-asked.
Uh, this is a request by Subego Realty LLC represented by JP Conley of DH Roma Consulting Engineers for sketch plan review of our proposal to create a fourteen-lot residential open space subdivision on the forty-one plus or minus acre parcel off Eagles Nest Road at tax map sixty-three, lot thirty-five dash twenty-four, on the remaining land in the Eagles Ridge subdivision in a rural residential and agricultural zoning district. The proposal is subject to amendment to an approved subdivision plan review. Welcome back.
Good evening. Again, JP Conley, DM Roma Consulting Engineers. This project is a, uh, excuse me, uh, I'm here representing Subego Realty for Area Estate Subdivision. We, this is a sketch plan for a fourteen-lot subdivision, thirteen open space lots with a back lot, um, a single private road, off of a, uh, public road, um. Uh, off of a, uh, public road, um, the project site is located in South Ray off of Route one hundred. Um, upper marginal ways the access from Route one hundred and it turns into left, uh, onto Eagles Nest Road. Um, Eagles Nest Road was a subdivision that was. I wanna say approved in twenty nineteen, um, this is the original plan that approved it, yeah, twenty nineteen. Um, this, it was approved originally prior to that, this is the subsequent approval, I believe there had been some, uh, time lapses with resolutions in terms of what DPW had required for improvements. Um, and so they came back in for, uh, a second approval, I'm not sure exactly if that's the case, but it's what I've, I've been led to believe. Um, so what I'm looking for from the board tonight, um, is, um, a couple of things, um, this is a fairly steep, um, project site. And, uh, we recognize that there'll be some lots that we will wanna demonstrate, um, that the grading and driveways, um, septic and, and wells will work. S- as well as, um, bigger picture is, um, for us, um, while this was part of a, um, this is part of a parent parcel that was approved. Um, at, under a subdivision, um, this was, this portion of the project site was retained land, it wasn't open space, it wasn't considered part of their open space subdivision. Um, so we aren't going to be sharing any utilities, we aren't gonna be sharing any roads, we aren't sharing infrastructure. Um, they won't have rights to our open space, just like we don't have any rights to their open space or common areas. What, what we'd like to say is that, you know, we can put a big bold note on here saying that this is a, you know, amended subdivision, but it, you know, for procedure purposes. Um, but I don't know, um, we just really don't wanna make it misconstrued as a second phase where we're shearing infrastructure, we're sharing, uh, storm drains. We're sharing, you know, the fire cistern that exists at the top of the hill, we have no rights to use any of that. So, we don't wanna, you know, ten to fifteen years down the road, have somebody open a plan set up, so that, that's one of our bigger concerns. So, as I said, we have, you know.
So I think that should be fine, right, Krista, I mean.
That's one of the questions, that's before us, it's shown, the remaining land is shown on the face of a sign and file subdivision plan. So technically, the land they're developing is shown on the Eagles Ridge subdivision plan. So it may, may be a legal question, I don't know if we can take it on separate paths like that, like if the board can review it as an amendment, but not have it be an amendment when it's filed with the registry, I don't know that would work, just language wise. Uh, for how the motion would be made and how it's handled procedurally, um, so it, it may be a legal question, I just, I wanted to present it to you to have an understanding that we have, we haven't really sorted that out yet, I think, between the applicant and the board.
So I would say that's a homework assignment to sort it out, we just had that with the Campbell Acres one, right, it's happened to be named the same name as the other subdivision, which.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Started you out behind the eight ball.
Yeah, we couldn't have stuck our three lots into their HOA, you know what I mean, so it's sort of the same situation here, we hate to have them be participating in the maintenance of our roads, et cetera.
Right, but that created a lot of confusion that had to be explained, so.
Certainly, hence the names being different, you know, that was Eagles, this is, I believe Eagles Crest subdivision, we're proposing Aerie Estates.
You guys can figure it out.
Okay.
We'll go with whatever you come up with.
Um, so just to kind of, a couple of other things we've gone through, um, we've actually developed, really, um, developed a full subdivision plan set at this time. And, you know, road plans, everything, um, so I am looking for input on, um. If there are any specific lots in the subdivision that you'd be looking to have us provide grading, um, building location, utility location, and, um. And, yeah, the, the, the development plans for that, that lot.
My general answer to that is gonna be probably based on what the town engineer.
Okay, great.
Comes back with, I think I, that's gonna be your guiding light on a lot of that, but if there's anything in particular that you guys have, let them know now.
Well, Ms. Chair, I would just say that the, I mean, lot seven has got like wetlands all over it, I mean, that, you know, that, that, this parcel is challenged. Um, and, you know, definitely, I'm, I am going to be inclined to follow the guidance of town staff's direction to you on that point, but, um. Uh, I will be quite paying close attention and not inclined to be, um, overly generous on your wetland impact, so you, you wanna really minimize that as much as possible. When you consider where the, um, buildings end up being and where the driveways are, there's a lot of wetland dodging to be done.
Yep, uh, we, I think, um, our, our plan definitely, you know, and specifically to lot sevens, um, you know, we, we definitely, uh. We're, we're looking to avoid as much impact as possible, it's, it's, it's too costly at this point in time. Um, we, we've been notified by the Army Corps that now any impact over five thousand requires mitigatory, um, uh, compensation, so. It, it, that's pretty expensive, it's somewhere in the five dollars and eighty cents a square foot range, so, um, what was, you know. Generally, you know, free up to about fifteen thousand square feet is now cost prohibitive, we're, we're losing lots on subdivisions because of it, so, um, we're, we're definitely conscious of that. No, um, and in fact, we've looked at this plan in, um, in, in numerous different concepts, uh, I'll share a couple with you. We showed a concept with, you know, uh, just typical subdivision lots with frontage on Eagles Crest with the, um, the subdivision road to the south. But there became apparent that there's potential for a vernal pool, we kind of went away from that, um, we're not certain if it's a vernal pool or significant, and we won't know until spring. Um, but in the meantime, we're, we're deferring from that, um, we've also looked at this design with, uh, a cul-de-sac at the end of the road. And we've met with, um, the fire chief as well as Kristen, um, uh, Kristen was at the meeting with the fire chief. We've also met with DPW to make sure that all of the infrastructure that was required as part of Eagles Nest subdivision was complete and installed. Um, and the, you know, everything was resolved with that project before moving forward, so we wouldn't be on the hook to be installing fire cisterns. You know, to meet what was not, you know, completed as part of that subdivision. Um, and to our, to effect of, um, Public Works is, has no off-site requirements for us at this point in time. Yeah, we just wanted to make sure anything that was promised on the last one was, was provided for and, and taken care of, um, there, and then, um, you know, so we have. We're looking at both the option for cistern or fire sprinklers, um, so that, that, there's, both are acceptable to the fire chief as, as I've been told. So aside from that, um, yeah, I, I think those are the biggest questions I'm looking for was just the direction on which lots to develop, you know, site plans for. Um, and then, um, whether or not to rename this project and, and make it phase two, amend subdivision of Eagles Nest, or Eagles Crest, I.
Ridge.
Eagles Ridge, thank you.
It's now after none.
The road name, I just, I always think it's the road name, you know?
So I, I would also offer, you know, that Melinda said lot seven, I'm also curious about lot eight, just given its proximity to the potential vernal pool.
The vernal pool is actually, um, lot, I think it's ten, which is the very end of the road, um.
In note number six, we had flagged, just from a staff perspective, eight, nine, and ten.
This is the vernal pool location. So, it would be that lot right there, um, we, we look at, I, I mean, I'm, I'm fairly certain we're gonna find a way to do that one now, cause that's located right there. Um, and if there were any others, like, everyone happy to, it's, they are just costly and timely to develop, so we, we'd like to not do them for lots that are pretty much easy.
Yeah, so, okay, yeah, so that is a lot of.
So you're a professional engineer, you know which ones need to be engineered.
Right. You don't need us to, do you?
Well, it, it, you know, it varies by builder too, I honestly, you know, I mean, some are capable of doing better building placement than others, and so, um, yeah.
Um, so you've got lots of staff comments there to consider, I'd say the one that stands out to me, and it seems to usually on these, is the open space. Um, and tab, staff made some comments about it, you know, the accessibility from the road and that it's split into two non-contiguous parcels. Hilly full, full of some wetlands, um, we, we're definitely gonna be doing a sidewalk on this one, so.
Sure.
With galoshes.
Yeah, so we'll have to look at that, um, something I wonder about, and I don't, I'm only wondering about it, is I, I'm not saying one way or the other if it's good or bad, I don't know. Because I don't know if it creates benefit or problems, but there's, um, Eagles Ridge subdivision, open space parcel A. And I don't know whether you speci- whether it's, you know, one theory could be that having your open space adjacent to that one is some type of benefit. Another theory is that then you have to put a fence up. In open space or something, or I, it's just something to think about, I don't have an answer, I just see it on the plan. Uh, I'm sure the open space committee would have their thoughts on it as well.
Yep.
And you may for some, you know, for separation reasons, you may not like it, I don't know, but something to consider.
We, the, you know, I mean, it, the light green, beige, yellow, green, um, colors represents the open space in this presentation plan. Um, we put the, the scenic buffer and the fifty foot, uh, strip between the, the subdivisions, um, in the open space, just.
Yeah.
Just to make them, you know, part and parcel, so that it's not just blank, it's dead space, uh, for us, uh, you know, it could be common land, but, um. So the reality is, the, the, the large area in that area, um, i- is our primary open space area. It, it, we do have the adjacency problems with that, but, um, i- it's, it's a, you know. To the effect of, you know, how steep it is and everything, we actually designed a subdivision going through that area, so that it, it's, it's manageable. Um, there's existing trail systems out there, um, we definitely don't want fences on something like this, it seems intrusive and quite frankly, it would be inhibitive of using the existing trails. Um, so I, I can't speak to exactly where the trails are, we've walked the site a couple of times now and, and they're, um, they're definitely there.
What, what sort of trails, like?
Just kind of, um, beaten down.
Skitter trails or snowmobile trails, walking paths?
Walking paths, uh, deer trails, that sort of thing, you know, areas of sparse, um, vegetation, um, that nature.
The thing though, it, that was helpful to see the colors, uh, but the access is all from the front of the, other than the perimeter is from the front, so there could be some. Challenges around having like a, you know.
Connectivity.
You don't have like a midpoint.
Um, we could create one, I mean, if I had to cut.
Not necessarily asking for that now, but I'm thinking it's in the ordinance, I don't remember exactly.
No, it is, and, and we had this discussion with the center road straight line subdivision before, because we had the, whether the road was gonna go through to the end. And, and we had that same situation here as well, um, right here is the stubout for their future road easement. Um, and on there, um, let me flip to their subdivision plan, um. So, i- if, if this, this note right here, I don't know if you guys can see it, we'll try to blow it up a little bit better, it just basically says that this is a theoretical location. Where the, the subdivisions could be connected, um, we're pretty sure that the budding subdivision is not interested in connection. But it says a pr- a potential future right of way to, to remaining land to be reserved, location conceptual, final alignment, if constructed, may vary. Um, any such extension requires planning and road approval, so we could, um. Theoretically, um, you know, bring that road further down into lot fourteen and s- similar situation to there, you, you know, lot fourteen is a, a very large area. It could be, um, expanded, there's existing land both here, here, and here that is available. So, a future development could go through and, and extend and be bigger, um, partially the reason why we like the hammerhead that design versus the cul-de-sac, so if there's a future extension. Um, we're not losing lots because of frontage issues, because the, you know, reduction of frontage around a cul-de-sac versus, you know, just extending straight through. But, um, to the, back to the open space, um, I have no issue eliminating this portion of the open space. I could provide connectivity to this open space by extending it along the back here, um, and, and losing some of my lot fourteen area. There, we, we do have that to pro- provide better adjacency, um, and but I think we have access and opportunities to put some, we have a, a, a turnout area for, um. Gravel for parking for bus stop people up in this area, as well as that was where we were contemplating a, a cistern, um, so.
I feel like, I mean, we're gonna need to see this site before we can.
Sure.
There could be a reason why it's better to keep it the way you have it, maybe it creates a buff, you know, some.
Yeah.
Buffering it, and it's too early to give you any specifics.
No problem.
To me, I think, when we see it.
Okay.
We may see something different.
Could I ask this question, um, open space committee is actively engaged in trying to implement their plan, uh, Hemlock Woods folks, did just meet with them. Before presenting you with phase two of their plans, um, I don't know if that's something you wanna ask applicants to do going forward, they know, they're trying to figure out where are the trails, how are we connecting the trails? Where's the existing open space and how is this playing with it at this level, at sketch plan level before it's really far underway, so I, I just wanna throw that out there, so you.
I mean, I do wanna ask, like, we can't, it's, we can't require them to do that before they come back, I don't think.
It's not currently required, but if it's something where you want their input in order to make your determinations, I believe that's within your.
I would appreciate their expertise, yeah, and bigger picture, because we're trying to connect everything, so that's part of the comprehensive plan.
Well, I think you're, I think you're a resource for the planning board to use, which is what we develop more. I suppose, yeah, when I think of it in that way, we probably could, um, require input from the open space committee. There's no reason that we couldn't, like we do with the fire chief and the town engineer, so.
Yeah, your call.
It's another way to get at that goal. So I'd say that's how we're gonna ask for it. Any way they can get input.
We, we, it's a roundabout way to get there, but we'll get there.
Okay, what's your plan for the lot fourteen, ju- just no plan yet?
Uh, no, there isn't one, um, it's retained land, um, it's, uh, no, there's no development intention. It is, is to be a developable lot, it could be a single family home, it could be back in front of you as phase two of Aerie's estate for subdivision at some point in time as well, um, but.
The plan is to build single family homes in here?
Uh, yes, yes. I, I believe that, uh, the open space subdivision.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Includes us from doing duplexes, I mean, theoretically, we could put a duplex on lot fourteen, but, um. Maybe not, maybe.
Been done before.
With, with some discussion with town staff.
Yeah, lot, lot fourteen is one of the questions out there right now, though, it's not included in the NRA NRD right now.
Right, yep.
So right now, it's not viewed as necessarily a buildable lot, because it's not part of NRA NRD.
Okay.
So that's something, I don't know if the board wants to weigh in on if you want this to be showing up as remaining land, the way it does in the current Eagles Ridge subdivision plan, or if you want it to. or if you want it to be a buildable, sellable lot at this juncture, as it sounds like what you're probably proposing, that it would be wrapped into the NRA NRD now.
Okay.
Cause right now, it's not.
Yep, you're right.
So right now, you're only okay for thirteen lots, like, we addressed really good, but.
We, we had that discussion.
But you've got fourteen on the face of the plan, so that would need to be adjusted unless you folks wanna advise that you'd like to see it as remaining land, that is not a sellable, buildable lot at this junction.
Wanna prevent another Hemlock acres.
Cause that is, that does seem to be kinda where these things go, that it would be a phase two probably in the future, and be further cut up, and be... So, right now, it's not, the NRA NRD is not reflecting that it's a buildable lot, and that can be amended.
To me, that's up to the applicant, not really up to us. He can present what he wants, and.
Oh, go back, don't look at me, I'm not the applicant. But I, I can't make that choice for them, I, I wish I could, someday maybe, but, uh, we, we would definitely address that, I think, that was part, we, we, we discontinued that section, so that's not included into the space and bulk, um, dimensional, um, you know, but, basically.
Oh, go ahead. I was just gonna say, uh, before I forget, the other thing is, I did receive one, uh, letter. And I forwarded it to the flat board, but I didn't forward it to you, I wanted to make sure.
She provided it to me this evening.
Yep, so, you can consider anything in there, um, that you feel like, um, is pertinent to your application.
Yep.
And we'll consider it as well.
I haven't read it, but I will definitely digest it and, and provide feedback.
Anything else? Anything else you're looking to get out of tonight?
Not from you guys.
Is it too early for you to think about a site walk?
Not at all, I think it's ideal, I'd rather not wait until December.
Snowshoe weather.
It is actually, um, the, to, uh, it is a very walkable site, it, uh, where the road is, uh, we won't be getting right.
Kristin, what's the, um, timing that you need for public notice again on a site walk?
Like to schedule it at least a couple of weeks out, so we could get, we could get it out this week, we could get a letter out this week, that doesn't take a lot of time, but, uh, the mail is not super fast, so I'd like to schedule something a couple of weeks out, if we could, I know you have lack of availability, we, if we could look even, like thirty, thirty-first of this month, we could probably, if we could get it out tomorrow, I think it would get to folks in time.
Halloween.
The paper notice, the newspaper notice, we need to get in as well.
If, um, if I may also, if we're gonna have the open space committee weigh in on the, the open space design, it may be behoove them to be invited to the site walk as well, if that could be accommodated.
I have some availability the week of the thirtieth, but then the following week, I'm out.
I mean, I could, the, fill in the options, or the thirtieth or the thirty-first for me.
And we need to do it in daylight, which is shrinking, seven minutes. Tuesday would be better for me, I have no Halloween issues, no children of that age, so.
You're back in time to give out candy.
Yeah, well, that's nobody's fault. No one comes to my house. I'm fine with that, and plus it's gonna be, and I guess we're gonna need like four, how early?
Yeah, so I've, Tuesday, I, I can be done at four, I've got something until four, so, it doesn't really work, cause I'm, that's when I could leave my house.
Yeah, and I would guess the sun sets then at five, if not earlier than that.
So you're gonna have the time change, so it's gonna be dark super early.
Yeah.
We do have a thousand feet of road to walk, too, so.
And then you're, um, gone?
Um, yeah, it would be December before I could do another one.
Early December?
Yeah, like the first week.
I could do the fifth.
Is the thirty-first, is not doable?
No, he's got it coming until four, so.
Meeting until four, so, not really.
We'd accommodate Saturdays, too, if that helps.
Does that help, Kristin? I have been really bored lately. I don't know about you. How about the fifth, December?
So every, it's every Tuesday?
Oh, every Tuesday, oh, so Tuesdays are always gonna be a problem for you, I got you.
Just while at that particular time.
One day, the fourth?
I, okay, I could do the thirtieth also, but that wouldn't work for you?
The thirtieth, I have meetings until five.
I could do the fourth of December, as early as three, three-thirty?
I could as well.
It's really, really hard. I'm not sure.
When you run out of daylight, it's really hard, because you're getting into the workday.
Yeah, I must wonder about that Saturday, at the end of that week.
What Saturday?
Well, uh, the ninth.
Of December?
Yeah, and just because, like, it gets dark so early, the, and we need probably an hour there. No way, less than forty-five minutes.
Also depends on the crowd, too, we seem to have longer ones, the more participants.
Crack it down.
Popular guy. I mean, if, would we wanna do it, like, maybe eight or nine, or nine, so that you just get it over with, and it doesn't impact as much as your day, I'm good with that, but.
Seven.
Seven AM, we'd probably limit public input, so we don't want that, we wanna be encouraging to the public.
I'm fine with any time on that Saturday.
So.
How about you, Kristin?
If we're talking about December, maybe we can think about this one a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, cause we don't, it was, if it was the thirtieth or the thirty-first, we would have to do it tonight, so she could have
Correct.
Time to get it out, but if we're talking about the first week of December, I think we have, we have plenty of time to think about schedules and, and whatnot.
I can get the road built by then, so it makes it easy to walk through.
Yeah, I just, sorry, I don't see the October. Unfortunately, there's kinda limited availability.
It's okay, we understand.
So, I guess tentatively, we'll plan on that sort of first week of December.
Okay.
TBD.
Yeah, um, well, we're pretty much, we had, we've got, we're, we're a little sort of lined up to get the staking done this week, so it will be ready. Um, and, yeah, what, whatever you guys need for timing, we'll, we'll do our best to accommodate.
Okay.
It may not be me, but we'll make sure somebody's there for us.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Well, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
What's going on?
Thanks.
Still water pines.
All right. Now, continued business. Last up, we have Stillwater Pines, this is a request by A.H. Grover, Inc., represented by Steve Roberts of S.J.R. Engineering, Inc. For planning board preliminary plan review of a proposal to create twenty-two lots in phase two of the Stillwater Pines residential open space subdivision on the thirty-six point two-nine plus or minus acre parcel off Woodcock Road. Map forty-four, lot oh thirty-two dash one twelve dash oh oh oh, in the medium-density zoning district. This proposal is subject to major subdivision review, and the property is subject to a contract zoning agreement. Welcome back.
I'm back.
Yeah, so you gave us a really nice, uh, overview last time.
I did.
Entire project, and I think we would appreciate it if you focused on what's new, and let's zero in on what's changed.
Absolutely, Ben Grover's sitting in the back, so if there's some questions that I can't answer, maybe he can, he can address them. Basically, what we were at, uh, and, well, even before then, I wanna say Kristin, uh, put together a very, very excellent overview of the project to date, with, uh, updating from when we first came in from s- sketch plan all the way through to where we are right now. And, uh, we have read through all the, all the conditions and all the items that she had listed in that, uh, memo, and we have no, no problems with anything that's there. Basically, what we were waiting for from the last meeting was a hydrogeologic study, uh, for each of the lots that were there. The reason why it took so long to get here is we couldn't find anybody to turn it around any quicker than what it is. So, that was, that was submitted, uh, there were no, uh, findings from the hydrogeological study that, uh, were surprising. The nitrate studies all fell within the drinking water standards on the lots. Uh, we already had, uh, gray water district confirmation of a, of, of the water line, uh, with an email that came in from the district. The vernal pool buffer impacts, we're gonna bring through the DEP process, uh, and we understand that if there's something there that doesn't meet their criteria, we may have to adjust some of those lots, e- including, uh, the number of the lots, if that's, if that's how it, it turns out. I think we're all right the way that we are right now. Uh, and then the last thing was the road width allowance interpretation from the contract zoning agreement. And Kristin had a, a, a pretty good comment in her comment se- section on that. In essence, uh, that's where we're our, that's where we're at right now, uh, we'd like to get preliminary approval, our next step, uh, once we have a preliminary approval from you, is to take this project and aggregate it with all of phase one, uh, and then send it all up to DEP, uh, for their review and approval. Once that's done, we come back here, uh, for our final approval. The timeframe at DEP, uh, is lengthy, uh, and I think Kristin also brings up another possibility in her comment section, that maybe we, uh, I know that we're supposed to have something back within six months, it doesn't make a lot of sense for me to come back if I don't have their approval within the six months, so maybe, uh, an extension, uh, could be worked out at this point. Be happy to answer whatever questions.
No, I don't, I don't have any, um, any questions. I'm okay with everything, especially you kind of, you got ahead of me, which is good, um, that you're find acceptable, the, uh, staff and engineers' comments, so, um, we'll let you work through all those that are in the memo.
Yeah, I think we've already addressed most.
Yep.
Most, if not all of them, but, yep.
Any initial comment, questions, or comments from the board?
I just appreciate you acknowledging that you may have to lose a lot depending on what happens with, or you may, things may shift depending on what happens in regards to the vernal pool.
The town isn't the only approval, I mean, we need approval from the DEP and.
Right. So, just appreciate the care and intention around that, so, thank you.
Yeah, I think that was good, that it worked out, that the attorney's opinion on the road width, so, I think we're all in favor of that, right, from my recollection?
I would, I would say that I always prefer less pavement, but hearing from the neighbors, um, makes me inclined to be in favor of the larger road, simply for them. But, I, I do love less pavement, and I think we're overly fond of it in general, but I'm good with the wider road, if that's what the applicant wants, given that it's permitted.
Okay, um, so I think we can.
So that's number fifteen?
I wasn't in the, I wasn't at the, uh, that's fine, I didn't get that far ahead, and I was about to start with our discussion points, but.
Can I?
Question about the road width.
It is, that's diff- yeah, one second.
Sure.
Yep. That doesn't match what's in the plan, I thought it was eighteen.
Where am I at?
Is it, wait, I gotta go back to that page, it is, I was right on the page, is it, yeah, the travel width is ten-ten, and four and four for the shoulders, right? Correct, yeah, okay. Okay, so that doesn't match, yeah. Sure.
So the current neighbors wish they had a wider road. There aren't any new people living on the new road. I'm assuming that the existing road is not gonna be widened.
Correct.
So, the people wishing they had a wider road are the people who live on the piece of road that already exists. You have no information from the people who would be living on the next parcel. Just putting that out there.
Yep, thanks.
The intent of this is pretty clear from the council's standpoint. Turns out that you can do what you want, because the CZA wasn't worded in such a way as to lock you in. But that's not the council's intent. The council's intent is really clear, and the council depends, just, you know, just like any other ordinance, on the, on the planning board's interpretation of the council's intent, when they entered into a CZA with this developer. The other piece of it is, we do not have access to that, to the, to the land that is being needed to the town for athletic fields. You can't get there from here, the stream crossing may be built, but the intent was that we would have access to that piece of property in phase one, and prior to authorizing phase two, and I tried to drive there tonight, and I couldn't get there. So again, perhaps shame on us for not crossing our Ts and dotting our Is. The intent is crystal clear, that as part of phase one, we would have access to that property, not just the stream crossing bill. So, I'm just putting that out there. The council, I think the majority of the council's not happy with the fact that you're doing an N run around us, when we entered into this agreement in good faith. But you are well within your right, and our attorney has said as much, but... It's not out of your hands, it's a choice that you're making. We can't have this discussion this way, I'm sorry.
Right.
I'm done, I've said my piece. Thank you for allowing me to do that.
Thank you, um, I guess I need some enlightenment, um, or refreshing around the access piece.
Yeah.
On page twenty-four.
Yeah, I, so, is that number two under four?
Yep.
Yeah, the way, the way the number two under four is written is...
Yeah, the way, the way number two under four is written is with relation to the stream crossing and that piece of work. This, your concern was not raised to me previous, so that's not reflected in here as far as feeling that the council's intent was to have all of Woodcock constructed in Phase One, that that, so that's not contemplated as part of the memo, just to be clear. That, that note of four number two is with reference to the screen crossing culvert area and that road, piece of road.
The council's logic was that Phase Two may never ever be built. I mean, it looks like you're going to try and build it, for sure, but, well, it's not built yet.
It's not, hang on. Let's, this conversation is not going to happen.
Fair enough.
So, let's, we're, we'll, we'll talk, thank you. This is good stuff, I do want to hear it, but, so go ahead, just address it to me, please.
Sure, fair enough. No, I, I think I, you know, I've been clear, it was, the intent was that the council wanted to be able to use that, the council wanted the town to be able to use that property
Right, because...
At the end of Phase One.
I would 100% agree with that because you would never know that a Phase Two would ever come, so that's, that is obvious.
And just clarifying question, so as this is written in by staff, yeah, well, the comments for staff is that this would be required before final approval of the lots of Phase Two?
What would be?
So, that, all of, everything that's outstanding from Phase One?
Yes, yeah, but you're reading, per my reading of the CZA, the completion of the road is necessary prior to turning the land over to the town. And again, this may be a legal question, and I understand what you're saying about council intent, but that's what that's based on. It's not based on Woodcock being constructed. My understanding was that they needed Phase Two approval to construct the rest, rest of Woodcock. Again, that's, that may be a council or legal question, depending on how, the CZA was before my time, but...
Can I comment?
Not yet, thank you.
Okay.
Just, I'm going to figure out what's, because the, this CZA piece was between, hold on.
I think it's a legal question to the attorney.
Yeah, so, the, hang on a second.
Well, Phase One was during COVID.
I'm talking. So, just so you know, the, the planning board was not really involved in the CZA development other than public hearings, so we didn't have firsthand knowledge, so we're just trying to get our head wrapped around this item. I, I will let you speak, but just give us a minute to get sorted out here among the staff. So, where, where are we?
I mean, I don't know if you want to actually review the CZA, I have a copy up here.
We're not going to get into interpreting the, I mean, I'll, I'll need to read it again.
Yeah, I was just noting for the board that the memo as written does not contemplate what Councilor McGuire brought up.
Right.
Regarding Woodcock being built.
So, what your memo does speak to, though, is staff did visit...
Yes.
That site.
The stream crossing and the associated piece of roadway that will go from the end of Woodcock to the land that is to be transferred to the town. And that, just, number two addresses the status of that. At the time that I saw it, my understanding is that Doug went out there recently, and it was the same, that the gravel hadn't been put on the top, that the conduit wasn't run yet, so that, that is, four two is accurate to date regarding the stream crossing.
Okay. And then your concern was that there is a stream crossing, but it's not, in your view, access that was con, access, whatever that means, that was contemplated?
Yes, that was intended when the council entered into the CZA.
Okay, so the, so there's a stream crossing, I mean, I haven't been there, so I don't, like, you, you were contemplating that you could drive in there or whatever, and what did you find?
Well, I already, I already stated pretty clearly that the attorney has, has ruled on this.
I'm just asking...
You can't drive to the, the site of the athletic field now.
This is, if you want reference.
Sure.
It's at the back of the CZA. So, you can see where the stream is, the crossing has been built, but as you know from reviewing this project, the rest of Woodcock has not been built. When the town's access is via Woodcock over the stream crossing to that land, once the final approval were approved for Phase Two, they'd build out Woodcock, and the town would be able to access it through that land. Right, Councilor McGuire's point, I believe, is that he felt that was supposed to be part of Phase One.
Okay.
But, yeah, it's, there is no way for the town currently to get, to get to the playing fields, but they're not to be deeded over until July 24 anyway, per the deadline in the CZA.
Okay. One more, go ahead.
I just, I was on the site plan, or the site walk, and I don't think the stream crossing was built at that time, but it was started, but it is now built. Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure, but you were not at the site walk.
I was not at the, that's probably the only site walk I've ever missed. Okay. Thank you for your patience, go ahead.
So, the only thing that we can legally do without permits, we've done. The rough work is done, you finish on the road, I could do any time, but I mean, I, it's a two-day job, the rough work's done. I think what Mr. McGuire's talking about is, you get to the end, I gotta get my bearings, you get to the end of Phase One, this is cleared, but that's it. You can't get from, can't get there from here, from here to here. It's part of the approval process.
Yep.
So, back at Phase One, we thought we would be able to achieve this. We've been here quite a while, and then we got, and we have to go to the DEP. I'm not making excuses, there's one way around this, I think I mentioned it last time. If the town's willing to, and I don't think you're going to ever be able to do this, give us approval to do the rough work of Woodcock Road to that point, meaning from here to here. I have no problem doing that, but I don't think you, I don't think you can go out on that limb because we don't have DEP approval.
Okay. Can you hold? I'm going to ask him a question.
I mentioned that before.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I throw it out there again, I mean...
Can you, can you point to the, that corner?
So, so the ball field...
Just, yeah, no, just point to the corner of the road, up, 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 right there, stop, stop, and stop. I have a question for you now, is that where you're able to drive to?
Yes.
Okay, got it, I just want to make sure.
Yep. So, Phase One, Phase One is paved to here.
Yep.
And, and here, the handlehead. And then, we've got approvals at Phase One to clear and grub this.
Yep.
We built this the summer in the, during the window of stream crossing window, so the, the multi plate is in, and the road is built. It needs to be finished and touches and some conduit based on our agreement, that's an easy task, there's really no sense in doing the conduit until CMP runs that line in, but, yeah, you can't get there from the end of the road. He's, he's correct.
Can I go back to him now?
Yeah.
Thank you. So, what, in your view, was the council envisioning, was, was the council envisioning that, that connection from the 90-degree out would be built as a, as a road? When you say you expected access for Phase One, were you expecting as part of that CZA that, as part of Phase One, that what we're calling Phase Two Road now would be built out all the way to the town property, or what?
If that's what was required to get us access to the field, yes. But, you know, clearly, like, I go, you know, the staff, the staff's, the town's attorney trumps anything I'm going to say.
Fine, I'm just trying to understand.
No, I appreciate that. And they have, you know, and the agreement is until July of next year, as Kristin mentioned.
Yeah.
But it's just the technicality, I suppose, of the, you know...
I mean, I don't know how, I, I'm just trying to, this has been a long time since we talked about the CZA, and we weren't intimately involved, so I'm just trying to understand it. I don't even know, like, how would you propose that your, your expectation is fulfilled?
That's a good question.
That's the million-dollar question.
It is a million-dollar question.
You stated your concern, but is...
Well, again, the, the, I can just go back to what the town's attorney has ruled, which is that it's just not enforceable.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, I'm done.
He's done, yeah.
Yeah, I've said what I was going to say.
I don't like to leave anywhere with somebody upset. I, I think we can still meet this, I think, I think, you know, I think the DEP, if they do their process the way they should, we should, we should be able to meet your agreement. It isn't going to take us long to, we should be able, if it's, I thought it was March. You, you, remember I mentioned March?
Yeah, I was mentioning March.
And remember I mentioned we would need an extension? If it's July, I don't see that being...
It's right on the edge.
Out of the reach.
It's three years after the planning board grants final approval of Phase One.
So, it's July of 24?
That date was July 8 of 2021, so it's...
I don't see that, and I'm going, I mean, I don't see that being a problem, I really don't, because they should get us something by March, April.
Sure, it is a key word.
And then, as far as construction, 30 days to do the hard work's done, it's all cleared and grug. It's not that big an infrastructure, that one section, and we were going to do a bunch of stuff in the playfield area this winter when things slowed up a little bit for us, so I don't see that out of, I don't see that out of reach. The reason I kept asking for an extension is because I thought it was March, and that's out of reach, because I know we won't have, we just won't have, the hard part's done, the stream crossing. The rest of it's easy if we had approvals. And when I said back there, it's out of our hands, it, it kind of is. We had to go through this process, it's taken a little bit longer because we missed a few months of the hydrogeology study, and the minute we get preliminary approval, we can then send it to the DEP.
Well, the lesson for the council is to sharpen their pencil.
Not really, because really, we still have a good agreement.
Yeah, no, I'm not, yes.
But, in all fairness, that...
It's just not working out the way the council thought, and I think the, the road, the road width piece is another issue, which...
So, getting back to, getting back to that, and I'll step out of turn here, because I don't know all the angles, can we shrink it back to, I missed that, when we listened to the people at the site walk on Phase One, and they said, well, they got open ditches, we did away with that, they said, winter time, when the snow builds up, it's kind of dangerous, and now with the, with the new neighborhood going in, it would've been nice to have a wider road, so we ought to do, to do the wider road. Be honest with you, I don't mind going back to a narrow road because it's going to save us a ton of money, but is that going to hurt us as far as all the calculations?
No, well, it just, the, the stormy calculations will be overdesigned at that point, so that we'll be able to support more development. For example, if there's a parking lot that wants, needs to go someplace, I mean...
So, is it going to require a lot more work?
No, we'll just, we'll just shrink all the roads up.
So, if that, I don't want to, like you said, I don't want to leave tonight with, if that's, if that's an issue, I just assume, I missed it, because I don't sit and look at that agreement, I think I've looked at it three times, and I haven't read it through very carefully either, I mean, I knew what we intended to do, and I missed that. We listened to the people, made a wider road. I don't mind going back to what the CZA wants, not make a mountain out of a molehill. I know you like the wider road.
I, I, it's not that I like it, it's what you wanted, and I was fine with it.
I don't want, I don't want to, I don't want to leave a bad taste in the council's, we'll go back to the, the road that we put in the agreement.
The attorney's advised that you have the authority to agree with the applicant to do a wider road should you want to without reopening the CZA, if that's something that you think is beneficial, given the neighbors' input, given the fact that it's going to be access to public land as well.
And we've heard the intent of the board was a narrower road.
I mean, I don't know why the, the council, I don't know why the council is prescribing road widths and things like that, that's kind of out of their lane, but...
All of our ordinance is prescribed road width.
Wow.
And actually, their engineer came to us and asked for the change.
Well, this has gone all over the place.
It wasn't the council's idea.
Okay, well, and then they came back and wanted it wider. I don't really care. I mean, in general, I would say we should do something in keeping with the stated intent of the CZA, since we're all on the same team. I don't really care a whole lot about whether it's, what it, what's in the CZA. It's 18, right?
18.
The CZA is 18 feet in width, two foot wide paved shoulders, five foot paved sidewalk, if they can, for the existing. The extension to Woodcock, 18 foot in width, two foot paved shoulder, five foot wide sidewalk on one side with curbing, four foot wide esplanade on the other side.
I mean, at one time, my understanding was you guys wanted the 20. I really don't care, if you're happy to...
I just want to keep everybody happy, it's whatever you guys want.
So...
I'll save money with, with a narrow road.
So, it sounds like a win-win-win.
I'll expend a little bit, if I have every design at all, but I just don't want to leave you tonight, and I don't mind that.
So, are we in agreement, or we will go back to the 18-foot width?
So, basically...
You're good with that?
It's, what is it, 18.2?
It's 18.2 and two, so it's 20, it's 20, yeah, 22 feet wide, and we got 28 feet wide right now. Okay, I, and...
If you're happy with that, it's what the council...
We'll change it back, but I just, and I, I'm just going to say this, why we did this was because we heard comments from the planning, from our site walk and from our, our research on the neighborhood, so...
And that's why I was okay with it, but I really don't care. It's not, neither way is a make or break for me personally, so...
Well, and we'll have more traffic on it.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I would just like to state that if I had been involved in the CZA, that I would have also been in favor of this more narrow road. It actually slows traffic down and makes people more careful, and less pavement is a good thing, so I am happy to hear that you're willing to narrow the road, and I think you raise a good point, that they're, they want their road to be wider, but that's not going to happen. I, I think that this could be just fine, and I actually like it better, so I'm in favor of that.
I'm on board, we're back down to 22.
I think a wider road, if there was no sidewalk, would be, it would be a different situation, because there's also a dedicated sidewalk, that makes the difference.
Yeah, I think parking on the side of the road is what the problem was.
It slows, yeah, it does. I, frankly, I grew up in a town where all the roads were like that one.
Right.
It's just what people are used to.
Right.
And it does slow the traffic down, which is part of what we're trying to do in the neighborhoods. That's probably the biggest complaint I get. I'm talking, I'm hearing you.
No, you're not.
I am too. I'm done, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You've been very tolerant, I appreciate that.
I appreciate, I have been very tolerant. I also appreciate your, your feedback, because it's good. Okay, nobody's changing their mind again, we're done. On the road, okay. Back to this access thing, I mean, I don't, what I'm not clear on is what the board can do or even needs to do in regards to, I guess, if they get their preliminary approval, that's my understanding, is that's enough for you guys to do your supplemental, and when you get it back from the state, then you can create access, whatever that means in the context of the CZA.
Which makes sense.
Okay, so, they're getting preliminary approval without the access, because that's the only way to create the access, so it's the best the planning board can do for the council.
Makes perfect sense, too.
To get your intent.
Again, like you said, the council is a lesson to learn.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the intent made sense, which is like, no, you can't start Phase Two until it's done, but it wasn't quite written...
Wasn't completely baked.
It wasn't written in a way that could, it could be achieved, so that's the best we can do, so...
Thank you.
That's what's going to happen.
Do you want the language citation?
I haven't gotten there yet, I'm just kind of trying to wrap my head around.
It just states that the access should be constructed prior to the conveyance of the parcel to the town.
Sorry, where are you right now? Are you in the...
This is in the CZA.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, this is not part of the memo, this is not contemplated for the memo. But the CZA is, is that it would be turned over, that the access would be built before the land is turned over, and as we discussed, the deadline to turn over the land is July, so, I was thinking maybe if... so, just thinking maybe if DEP gets back, we don't have to deal with that question, but we'll see.
I'm, I'm just curious about the, um, the other outstanding items from phase one, and what, um, what authority we have, or, you know, what can be done it, to ensure that these other components can move forward, like one and three.
The other held, you can't get final approval until they're done effectively.
Right.
The authority.
Yeah, okay, okay. It's just-
So, preliminary-
I hear that in terms of final, but we're giving preliminary approval, or we're aiming to give preliminary approval, and I'm just wondering if, like, particularly one and three, I don't know, it just feels like those things could happen this fall. Those don't have to be, I mean, 'cause we're looking at pushing back final approval, giving an extension for final approval for another six months, so, yeah, that was late night babbling.
So, number three in the proposed motion does contemplate requiring, or noting that all the phase one requirements have to be done before they would get final approval, should you grant preliminary approval?
Mm-hmm, right, so.
It is noted.
Yep.
If you wanna go that route.
Okay.
Same, fine. Okay, can, let's get back to our, um, so, the hydro, hydro geological survey, are we happy with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, same, so, um, I think we're good there. Um, I think we have sufficient information to grant conditional approval, yes?
Yes.
And then, so there's this six-month thing, um, can, I mean, is there a reason now to even grant the extension, or?
It just saves us all the time of having to have them come back.
Okay.
So, it gives, if it gives that window, so they need it.
So, this is just a proactive grant, because they may not need it.
Everybody's been saying that DEP is significantly backed up, so.
Okay, so.
Administratively, so it saves that.
I would say, let's go ahead and do that, I'm fine with that. Someone wants to make a motion?
I'll jump on that one, you can have the next one. Move to grant a six-month extension for submittal of the final plan beyond the six-month post- preliminary approval submittal window, per the board's authority as granted in four-zero-one dot eight dot one dot A, due to anticipated delays in outside agency permitting.
Any discussion? All in favor? Nothing? Okay.
Would, Mr. Chair, this was the part I mentioned to you at the beginning, that there was one other discussion point suggested by the engineer?
Yes, remind me what it is, please.
Is landscaping in lieu of a guardrail sufficient at the lot thirty-three driveway slash pond area? He thought the board might wanna weigh in on that.
That's right.
This is his comment.
Is- Oh, oh, number three.
Change to lower, reach two.
Twenty-two.
So, there's stormwater right there.
What is landscaping of what sort, like, boulders?
I think you'd call it, I'd like Steve to speak to that.
We could do rocks if that, if you'd rather have rocks than landscaping. Rocks are all right.
I have a question, clarifying question. Can you remind me, what is the, um, is this just a detention pond, it's not gonna retain water, it's just gonna be mucky during a storm event, and then it drains down, or what's the story with it?
A di, yes, a detention pond does store water.
Okay.
A retention pond retains water. What we're bu, building is a soil filter pond, so basically, the water comes in, infiltrates down through, gets collected underneath by underdrain, and then is discharged.
Okay.
So, it should be dry most of the time.
Yeah.
Right.
And it can be mowed, yeah.
Uh-huh, okay. Can it not be mowed?
It can be mowed.
But, no, can it not be mowed, is it, are you planning, know it?
It has to be mowed twice either.
Okay, bush hogged, but not like mowed, like a lawn?
Per the DEP.
Gotcha, okay. I'd be fine with veg, I don't think a guardrail is needed, I think vegetation, and maybe some rocks or something to make it distinct, so that you don't, it's not encouraging people to muck around in it, but-
Yeah, and where are they talking, only along the road?
I think where he's talking is between the driveway and the pond.
Uh, I guess we don't-
The driveway on lot thirty-three comes down right inside the driveway.
Sheet two, sheet two will show the driveway.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is.
No.
No.
So, it's just there.
Oh.
Yeah.
Let's read up against, sheet three, I had sheet three, it was affecting-
I was gonna say, I'm in sheet two, that's not there, there it is.
Right, it's easier to see on that.
Yeah.
I mean, to me, a guardrail, like, doesn't fit at all, like, I mean, unless it was like a wooden, you know, post-
Right.
Pipe, yeah, like, I don't know what you're-
Do you have some spare rocks on that site? You can spread around.
There'll be some rocks.
That would be consistent with a lot.
Yeah, I mean, what you don't want is, I mean, 'cause it's gonna be like a, the slope or whatever into that, that's gonna be right next to the driveway, probably, and-
Mm-hmm.
I guess, I, I mean-
Native pokey vegetation.
Yeah, yeah, right, discouraging vegetation. I, I, I do think some of that-
What's the slope, what's the slope into that, into that area?
Two-zero-six, there.
From the pond, the pond is in a three-to-one slope.
So, the rocks are fine.
So, rock. I mean, that's steep enough that you don't wanna, I'm just thinking of someone getting their car over there, especially in the winter, for s, or whatever.
Yeah. I think some rocks interspersed with some vegetation, so it just doesn't look like a, you know, kind of-
Well, that's the thing, like, we, we shouldn't require boulders, like, you know?
Yeah.
We're not designer, we're not, I think, I would frame it like a natural safety barrier or something like that.
Yeah, right.
Because it could be wooden beam guardrail, it could be boulders, it could be boulders alternating with trees, I don't think we should specify boulders, because what we'd end up with is seventy-five feet of-
Yeah.
-boulders plucked down, like, and we're not design, site designers, so I think I would frame our, from our perspective, it should be, like, I don't know the exact wording, but-
So, you're not feeling you need a guardrail?
No, I definitely wouldn't.
Okay.
It could be a guardrail, but I would, I would just frame it like a natural safety barrier, like, as in, you know, wooden guardrail, boulder, trees, or some combination, whatever, something like that.
It'll be something that needs to be attractive to, 'cause that's our, that's the entrance coming into that lot, so.
Yeah, exactly.
We'll, we'll do it right.
We, well, yeah, we don't wanna tell you how to do it.
Right.
But it just, our, our role is to make sure that it's safe, but not hazardous, so, I guess we have that captured, yes?
So, we need to, does that need to be, um, a condition?
Yes.
We have to wanna make it one of the conditions. I don't think it's in there right now.
Right.
That would be number sixteen.
All right, there's some placeholders, did we, did we, let's sort out, to make sure those are all.
We did the six-month extension, so we can strike the first placeholder under fourteen and the second one.
Second part.
And then fifteen, we-
That's revised to, what is it, eighteen?
Eighteen and two.
Eighteen and two, and it's still five-foot sidewalk.
So, is, um, the second placeholder now fourteen?
Yeah.
Because we've issued a six-month extension, right? And what are we gonna, what am I calling? A vegetative and-
Natural safety barrier?
Yeah, that's what you had.
Natural material safety barrier.
Between the driveway and the, you wanna call it stormwater management area?
Okay.
As it is on the plan, or use the phrase that he-
Drive way.
Stormwater soil filter pond is, but what do you mean?
Stormwater management.
Lot, which lot was it again?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Yeah. Stormwater.
Management, or?
Yes. Management area.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I think I got it. All right, all right.
Pass on?
Are you ready?
Hey, I'm ready, I guess before you do it, I just wanna verify everything else that's in the memo, as far as staff comments and engineer comments, you're good with incorporating all of it, right?
Yes.
Okay.
'Cause we're getting ready to approve a whole lot of conditions.
Yep.
I saw, most of those have all been taken, they're already into the plans.
Okay.
Filter base.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Make the trigger.
Move to grant preliminary approval for the application by H, A.H. Grover, Inc., for a proposal to create phase two of the Stillwater Pines Residential Open Space Subdivision on the thirty-six-point-two-nine acre parcel off Woodcock Road, map forty-four, lot zero-three-two dash one-one-two dash zero-zero-zero, and the medium-density zoning district. This proposal is subject to major subdivision review, and the property is subject to a contract zoning agreement. This preliminary approval is subject to the following conditions, number one through thirteen in the memo to the planning board from, from the planner, and the new number fourteen, uh, and a few additional, as noted. Number fourteen, the planning board has issued a six-month extension for submittal of the final plan beyond the six-month post-preliminary approval submittal window, per the board's authority as granted in four-zero-one point eight point one point A, due to the anticipated delays in outside agency permitting. Number fifteen, the developer and planning board agreed to build out of the phase-two section of Woodcock Road and Stillwater Drive at eighteen-feet traveled way with a two-feet, two-foot paved shoulders on each side, curbed with five-foot paved sidewalks. And number sixteen, the developer and planning board agree, the developer will provide a vegetative and natural materials, material safety barrier between driveway of lot thirty-three and the stormwater management pond.
So, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Three, nothing. Again, so-
Yay, thank you.
Thank you for your patience while we worked through that.
I just wanna say kudos to you guys for getting through all this, I mean, this has been a long, long night, and you're good people for doing that, so.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good job, thanks. Got one more, who wants it?
I move, will you adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
All right.
That's a motion I can get behind.
Tapping out at ten oh nine.